All right. Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining. I will now call to order the regular meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, December 5, 2024, and we are at the City of Reno Council Chamber. We'll begin with Agenda Item 1, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Veltou, will you please lead us? Thank you. We'll now close Item 1 and move to Item 2. Roll call.
Carrie Romeyer. Manny Becerra. Christina Del VR.
Here.
JD Draculich. Alex Veltou. Sylvia Villanueva is absent. Harris Armstrong.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We'll close Item 2 and move to Item 3, Public Comment. This item is for either Public Comment on any action item or for any general public comment.
Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda, specifically https://links.rino.gov/pc12-05-24. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, we did... Hang on. We did receive correspondence for a future agenda item that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been added to the record. I did not receive any public comment cards for this item, nor did I receive any voicemails for this item.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak under General Public Comment?
It looks like we have somebody on Zoom that wishes to make public comment during this item.
Okay, great. We will move to Zoom.
Kim, are you there?
Yeah, I am.
Did you want to make public comment on this item, or did you want to make public comment during a specific item on the agenda?
I'm sorry, during the discussion?
So, we have General Public Comment, and then we have Public Comment during specific agenda items. So, do you wish to make public comment now, or do you want to wait?
No, I will wait. Thank you.
Okay, which item are you here for, so we can bring you in?
The Lakewood Tennis Club.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak under General Public Comment? Hearing none, I'll just bring it back to chambers one more time. Do you have anyone in chambers wishing to speak under General Public Comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close Item 3 and open Item 4, Public Hearings. Just want to note that we do have a floating agenda, and we can take items out of order. Based on that, I propose that we move Item 4.5, LDC 24-00016, Plumas Redevelopment, to the first item on the agenda.
I can second that. Commissioner Draculich?
We have a second? I actually don't think we need a motion on this. But is anyone on the commission opposed to moving the item?
No opposition.
Okay. No opposition. We will take Item 4.5 first, and I think we'll get a presentation from staff.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Leah Picati, and I am an associate planner with the City of Reno Development Services. This evening, I am presenting the application for Plumas Redevelopment. I think most everybody is familiar with the location of this site, but it is located on McCarran between Plumas and Lakeside. It is a 9.48-acre site. And today's request before you is for a conditional use permit for a 273-unit multifamily apartment complex and grading resulting in fills greater than 10 feet. Just to explain why those things are required, conditional use permit is required in the GC zoning district for any multifamily use with over 100 units. That's why we're looking at the conditional use permit. And any grading resulting in fills greater than 10 feet requires a major site plan review. Reno Municipal Code allows us to combine these applications into one conditional use permit, hence why you're looking at a conditional use permit for both of these items tonight. Regarding the zoning district, this is located in the general commercial zoning district. Key issues that were analyzed in this request were overall site design, compatibility with surrounding developments and uses, traffic access and circulation, and tree preservation. To give you a little bit of background here, this was previously Club Lakewood, and in 2019, the city council approved a zoning change from the Club Lakewood specific plan district to the general commercial zoning district. Following up on that, in 2021, a tentative map and conditional use permit were approved for 314 condominiums. And that's what you see on your screen right there. That's the 2021 approval. Today, they came in looking for a modification. We asked them to come back in with a fully different application. So, at first, this was being processed as an amendment, but because it was so different from the original 314 condos, we asked them to bring it in as its own application. So, again, this is a 273-unit multifamily apartment complex. It would be two buildings. Those buildings are going to be four to five stories in height, 45 to 56 feet in height. The general commercial zoning district does allow for a height of 65 feet, so at 56 feet, that is allowed. They are proposing 437 parking spaces. A development like this generally requires 305, so they are exceeding those parking requirements. Also, they're adding a couple of amenities in there, including an approximate 8,000-square-foot dog park located down at the bottom of your screen there. The grading that we're looking at, there's been some misconceptions here about grading, and that I've looked at the public comment, and people have mentioned that this is being built up into these large pads that are then going to be built. That's not what's going on. If you've gone and looked at the site, you'll see this, which is a giant hole in the ground. This was left over from the demolition of the tennis club. So, essentially, what they're doing is filling that hole in, and it's going to be maximum fills of approximately 23.2 feet. Heard a lot about compatibility with the public comments, so I'm going to go through that couple of slides here. So, this is high-density residential. It comes out to approximately 29 dwelling units per acre. I do want to point out that across McCarran, that's multifamily 30, which allows for 30 dwelling units per acre. And it is surrounded by moderate-density residential. Most of everything that's around this is either townhomes or condominiums. It is surrounded by arterial streets. That's something we like to see when we're looking at these larger multifamily developments. McCarran is a major arterial, and Lakeside and Plumas are both minor arterials, so we've got good modes of transportation that connect this particular area to other city centers. And then, we've heard a lot about the height. Increased height equals increased setbacks. So, you can either push this development out into multiple buildings around the site, or you can centralize it, which gives you larger setbacks, more of a buffer, and more screening. We're looking at these buildings being approximately 44 feet from Plumas, 112 feet from McCarran, 48 to 64 feet from the property to the east, and approximately 60 to 100 feet from the properties to the south. Also, I want to talk about compatibility here for a second, because I saw a lot of public comment that said that this is not compatible with the area. If you look up the definition of compatibility, the definition is two things that can coexist without conflict. It doesn't mean that it has to look the same or be the same height. It means that two things can coexist without conflict. So, in this case, regarding the compatibility findings, staff was able to make them. So, furthering that compatibility conversation, we have front setback buffers plus existing mature trees that will mitigate the building mass. What you're looking at on your screen here, everything that's outlining the property in red is that 10-foot front yard setback. Everything in yellow is additional front yard setback. It's buffering that's been put in, and that's somewhere in the range of 15 to 80 feet. Also, what this is showing us is that all of those little green dots are existing trees that are going to be saved. So, they are proposing to preserve 155 existing trees on site and add another 154 trees. So, we'd be looking at 309 trees total on this 10-acre site. Just to give you an idea, Reno Municipal Code would require about 219. Additionally, they're looking at 26% landscaping. Reno Municipal Code in the general commercial zoning district requires 15%, so we are exceeding that code requirement as well. Also, they're installing, and there is existing vegetative screening on the south side adjacent to the trash compactor, the maintenance building, and the dog park right down here in this area. So, that just increases that compatibility, because it mitigates the potential conflicts between this development and those developments to the south. Traffic access and circulation. I've heard a lot about traffic access and circulation on this project. I do want to point out that the traffic study was done. We do have, I think, people here tonight representing the firm, the engineering firm that did that study. So, what we're looking at is a slight increase in the delay. We are aware that there is already congestion in this area. I think everybody who drives this knows that there's congestion. But the increase that we're looking at from this development is really going to be around one or two seconds. And McCarran is going to be widened in the next five to 10 years, per RTC. They are doing some operational and safety improvements coming in the summer/fall of 2025. That widening project was originally expected in the 2030 to 2050 timeframe, but what I've heard from RTC is that they are bumping that up. We just don't know exactly when. They haven't set the list of priorities yet, so it'll depend upon where this particular project ends up falling in that priority list that will probably be determined next year, when the 2025 regional transportation plan is released. Additionally, a project like this is going to provide approximately 906,000 in impact fees. This is money that would go directly back into fixing regional road infrastructure, not necessarily directly adjacent to this property, but in the region. And the application is also going to provide a sidewalk and partial landscape property along McCarran there. If you've been down there, you would know that the sidewalk currently ends at the intersection of McCarran and Lakeside, so that's going to be extended up past this project, and there is a sidewalk that goes down Plumas, so that would provide connectivity down there. There will also be several points of connectivity from within the site to the sidewalk network out on the outside. I'll go through some findings here. So, these are our general review criteria findings. First one, is it consistent with the Reno master plan? Yes, very much so. It's consistent with the plan goals, it's consistent with the policies, and it's consistent with the strategies. Is it compliant with Title 18? Yes, with the conditions of approval, the project not only meets, but exceeds Reno Municipal Code in several ways. Does it mitigate the traffic impacts? Well, delays will be minimal, one to two seconds, and really, you know, we're looking at those future road improvements that are going to come along in the next few years. Will it provide a safe environment? Yes. The increased setbacks, the addition of the sidewalk, the landscaped parkway, that'll improve the environment for pedestrians and people on bicycles coming through that area. Now, we have the conditional use permit findings. So, is the use in accordance with Reno Municipal Code and the purpose of the zoning district? Well, the purpose of the general commercial zoning district is intended to accommodate a mix of higher-density residential, retail, commercial, and other employment and service-oriented uses. So, yes. Is the design compatible with surrounding development? It's surrounded by residential uses and arterial streets. We've got a largely increased setback. We've got a large percentage of landscaping. We have a large number of trees. They've provided extra screening, and staff has found that this will exist with the surrounding development without conflict. Is the design consistent with the development standards? Again, meets and exceeds Reno Municipal Code. Are there available public services? Yes, there are. This is a 10-acre infill project. Characteristics are reasonably compatible with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. Characteristics or distinctive features proposed will coexist with the types of uses permitted in the surrounding area. And finally, it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And staff believes that once developed, noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration, illumination, and other hazards will all be mitigated. That concludes my presentation. The recommended motion is on the board, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We get a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, here representing the applicant. With me also tonight, Kirk Gordon, representatives from Headway Transportation, the traffic engineer, our engineering team from Wood Rogers, and as well as Joe Ryan with Thompson Thrift, the applicant. So, I have a whole slew of folks to answer your questions tonight if necessary. Leah did a fantastic job and gave you a fantastic overview, so unfortunately, some of this is going to be a little redundant, and I'll kind of cruise through that as applicable. But this is a conditional use permit for the 100, more than 100 units in the general commercial zone, so we have 273 units, and also for those fills greater than 10 feet, as Leah pointed out, you know, that kind of large hole. There's also quite a bit of fall across the site, and with the large buildings in the middle, it does necessitate kind of more of a flattening of the site, so that's kind of what the nexus is for that grading. Here's a look at the site right now. As Leah mentioned, you know, a lot of multifamily around this, so these are like uses. This is master plan suburban mixed use, and just kind of pulled these out to further kind of solidify that, you know, this is a supported use in the master plan, that this provides, you know, SMU provides for opportunities for broader mix of uses in a more suburban context, while also preserving opportunities for higher-density infill and redevelopment, as well as provide opportunities for higher-density housing within close proximity to services and employment. And I think, you know, on McCarran, you know, on the McCarran ring itself, and obviously in this area of South Reno, fantastic opportunity for providing higher-density housing in proximity to those services. Zoning general commercial does allow for that mix of commercial and higher-density residential. Thompson Thrift is a new developer into our region. They're a national multifamily and mixed-use developer, and just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a flavor for what they do. They have, you know, more than 23,000 units currently constructed, 86 residential communities, and over $6 billion in development in the U.S. This is just a look at, you know, they've developed kind of across the United States. They've got offices, you know, across the Midwest and Southwest as well. So, essentially, they're not new to this. They may be new to Reno, but they are experts in the field of developing, you know, luxury multifamily developments. The specifics of this project, 9.3 acres, 273 units. Those are concentrated in two buildings located in the center of the site. Building 1, which is on the left side of your screen or the west side, is a four-story building. It is split-level, so on the, if I can point, there we go, on just this eastern side of Building 1, that one row of units is essentially one hallway in units. That's a daylight basement, so it's a basement level. It doesn't count as a story. So, it's a four-story building. But on that side of the building, it is about 55 feet in height. But next to the other building, obviously, that is a very good screening of that. And then Building 2 on the east side, the kind of backward seven shape there, 45-foot four-story building itself. We do have increased setbacks on the front, both in the landscape setback to the parking itself, as well as obviously setting that, those buildings back quite a ways from Plumas and South McCarran. 2.4 acres of landscaping where we're, you know, is an acre more than what we're required by code. 219 trees are required, and we have 309 trees that will be provided, consisting of 155 mature existing trees and 154 new trees. On-site amenities, you'll see kind of that pool area in that, you know, courtyard of Building 1, a dog park, also some indoor amenities as part of the buildings themselves. And finally, ample parking, you know, when this project came through originally, and we'll highlight it later in the presentation, but one of the complaints was, you know, that Plumas Street has on-street parking. There's a lot of on-street parking that's used from the other multifamily developments in the area, and there was a complaint that the previous project, the currently approved project, didn't have enough parking. This, you know, we're required just over 300 parking spaces, and we've got 438 spaces provided. Looking at the tree preservation, by code, we're only required to preserve trees that are in the front setback, so really, that red line represents the 10-foot setback along our street frontages. We've expanded that. Obviously, there's a lot of mature trees out there, and we're trying to save as many of them as possible. 155 have been identified. You know, obviously, some are being disrupted that are still there and would be removed. There's a few dead ones out there. Those will obviously be removed as well. One of the things that came up at the NAB was a criticism of the aesthetic of these buildings. I think they were referred to as prison-like. Unfortunately, you know, what we presented at that time were two-dimensional elevations, you know, for architects, planners, you know, we're kind of used to seeing that for the general public. Those are difficult to read, and so the applicant prepared some more robust three renderings that I'll kind of scroll through here, and you get really a flavor for, you know, these are more contemporary architecture, a lot of different colors and textures to these, and a lot of different articulation and fenestration in these buildings. Look at that central courtyard area. This would be the entrances to the building's view, a bird's-eye view from McCarran. Obviously, those mature trees kind of help to reduce the mass of those buildings, and obviously, the increased setback as well. This would be the view between the two buildings, so you get a little bit of a flavor. On the right side of your screen there is that five-story element. Again, it's kind of, you know, paired up with the other building, so the mass of that is not overwhelming. A little bit more on Thompson Thrift, really focusing here kind of on the right side of these columns. Some of their averages, this is again, because, you know, they have properties throughout the U.S. Their average renter is 35 years old, average household size 1.6 people, average household income over $109,000. So, they attract kind of a diverse community of young professionals and mature couples that are looking for these premium living environments. Some of their site criteria, which really is why they're most interested in this site, is they like being adjacent to, traffic thoroughfare is obviously McCarran, proximity to good jobs, so South Reno is definitely provides that, proximity to other high-end housing and schools, South Reno provides that, and a proximity to high-end retail, which would be to the east of this. Traffic also has come up. We did prepare an updated traffic study, as I mentioned, Headways here, to answer any questions that you may have on that. That was completed in October of this year. It will utilize, or the project itself will utilize, two existing driveways, one on Plumas, one on Lakeside. The access on Lakeside is a shared driveway with the adjacent multifamily to the south of us. There was, there currently is and was proposed to be continued to be used with the existing approval, a driveway on McCarran. It used to be a full access on McCarran there for the old tennis club. NDOT came through a couple of years ago and closed the median to close the left outs, or the left's, left-hand movements. There is a right-in, right-out driveway that's still out there. The previous project proposed to at least use the egress of that, and this project is proposing to not use it at all. Why is that relevant? Essentially, you know, because there is that increased traffic on McCarran. Removing some of that friction from McCarran helps, will help the situation overall. Existing intersection operations will have some negligible impacts, as staff mentioned, you know, in the kind of one-second range, so negligible to the public at large. RTC's 2050 RTP identifies that widening of South McCarran. That RTP is in the update stage right now and scheduled to be adopted early next year, and then we'll be adding that safety component of sidewalk on McCarran. Just to give you kind of a compare and contrast to leave you here, this is the approved plan from back in 2021. It consisted of eight buildings that were really oriented towards the edge of the site. So, you see those eight buildings, all four stories, and essentially, you know, 40-foot setbacks on the north side, 25-foot setbacks on the south and east side. It had a central amenity and pool. It was gated, and it had driveways on Plumas, Lakeside, and McCarran, as I mentioned previously. The new plan, it's two buildings oriented towards the center of the property. On the north side, adjacent to McCarran, 80 to 112-foot setback. On the west side, next to Plumas, somewhere around 140-foot setback. On the south side, 50 to 120-foot setback, and on the east side, a 64-foot setback. So, staff hit this. We wanted to hit it as well. You know, those increased setbacks really do add to the compatibility of this multifamily use adjacent to other multifamily uses. Still has a central amenity with that pool, and as I mentioned previously, just the driveways on Plumas and Lakeside, getting rid of that egress to South McCarran. So, that comparison kind of by the numbers here, you know, originally, or, you know, GC zoning allows for the high-density residential products. The approved plan was condominiums. This is mark-rate apartments. By and large, those are very similar housing products, you know, still a stacked-flat-type style. The density, we could have up to 419 units. The previous plan had 314. This is 273. That's relevant for a number of reasons. One, it's, you know, that just overall intensity, but also, you know, as we talk about traffic, the old plan had an average daily trip generation of about 2,300 trips. This new one is about just over 1,800 trips, so it's a 20% reduction in the amount of traffic that'll be generated from this, over what's currently approved. Building height, we can go up to 65 feet. Current plan has 40 to 50-foot heights in four-story buildings. This new plan, 45 to 55-foot, and again, in four-story buildings with that basement level, so those are compatible there. I would add on the building height, you know, you'll hear that, you know, there's nothing that, like that mass in this area. That's not true. To the east end of the west of this, there's commercial properties that have three-story, 40-foot-tall buildings. There's a Wells Fargo building to the west. There's the Magnolia kind of shopping center and a larger office building to the east of us that are just on the adjacent blocks. So, along McCarran there, there is some mass along that stretch. Front setbacks were required to have 10 feet. The old plan had 40 feet, and as I mentioned previously, we've got 80 to 140 feet along those Plumas and McCarran frontages. Parking, again, big issue or big, you know, concern that was raised by the public during the 2021 approval. We were required at that time to have 325 stalls. We had 392. This one, actually, there was a typo there, we're required to have 305 stalls, and we have 438, so quite an increase in the number of parking. That concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, we have our whole team here to help answer any of your questions. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation and would be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Great. Thanks so much. We'll bring it back to commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Becerra, please start.
Sure. I'm familiar with the site, read and reviewed materials, spoke with the applicant's representative and some residents.
Commissioner Aurora Meyer, familiar with the site. I read and reviewed emails. I did not speak to the applicant, and I listened to the voicemails.
Commissioner Del VR, and I have read the materials, seen the site, and I spoke with members of the applicants as well.
Commissioner Draculich, read and received emails, familiar with the site, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Veltou, same disclosures. Commissioner Armstrong, same disclosures. We'll now move, sorry, we'll now move to public comment. I do have two requests to speak forums. Do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on this item?
We do have one person on Zoom that I'm aware of that registered to speak during this item. We also have voicemails that we need to play during the meeting, too.
Okay, great. Maybe, should we start with voicemails, move to Zoom, and move to chambers?
Sure. And then, I'll just, while we're doing that, I'll just make note that we did receive correspondence, and that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered into the record.
Great. Thanks so much.
Hi, this is Brett Glover. I'm commenting on 6,000 Plumas, LDC 25-00016. I'm opposed to the project as presented. It doesn't, it doesn't fit into the rest of the neighborhood as far as the architecture of it. I think instead of having two large block buildings, they need to break it up so there's smaller units and not such an eyesore. I'm also concerned about the traffic. I think we're already getting, it's already backing up through Lakeside and Plumas now, and just adding that many more people trying to get into it is going to cause a problem. I also have a problem with, like I said, this thing just doesn't fit with the neighborhood at all, and what this is going to do to our property values. And finally, I'm not sure. And finally, I'm not sure if you guys look at what the, if the schools can handle, you know, this influx of people. So I think that's it.
My name is Karen Rates, R-A-I-T-S. The case number is LDC 25066. That's wrong. It's LDC 250016, 6,000 Plumas. I am against such a big apartment complex going in, 273 units, way too many for that area, way too big. I live in the Lakeside Blues Homes, so I will deal with all that traffic bringing from all those people. So I am against LDC 250016. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Glover. My address is Lakewood Terrace East. I'm a neighbor adjacent to the LDC 2500016, 6,000 Plumas apartment complex. I'd like to state that I am against building the apartment complex as it is now proposed. The proposed entrance and exit from the apartment complex onto Lakeside Drive is too close to the McCarran intersection and will be unsafe for through-traffic and turning-traffic from McCarran. It will back up like a crazy bottleneck there and create problems for all drivers on McCarran. The traffic already backs up through the stoplights at Plumas and Lakeside, where they intersect McCarran, and I don't know what that will look like if you add another 200 to 400 cars and drivers coming out of that new apartment complex. It won't be pretty. The apartment complex is too tall at four and five stories high. It doesn't fit in architecturally with the surrounding community. Lakeside living is adjacent to the proposed complex, and it has pitched roofs, and they are only two-story buildings. The noise from jamming that many new residents into the neighborhood will also reduce our quality of life and be very problematic for our enjoyment of our neighborhood. This project has come in many iterations from its first proposal, and this one is not appropriate. It doesn't have enough parking places for the number of cars and drivers that'll be at 273 new apartments. They will need to increase the parking on this. When they widen, when NDOT widens McCarran, that's going to take away that whole front section of this apartment complex land, and it'll also take out some of those parking places. And then our neighborhood will have a problem with that apartment complex's residents parking on Plumas and Lakeside, where there already is not enough spots for the residents that live out. Again, my name is Lori Glover. I live across from the new proposal, and I am against it 100%.
Hi, my name is Sandra Bengson, and I just called a bit ago. I was cut off. I'm calling in regard to the Plumas project, LDC 25-00016. I had just discussed the compatibility issue and the block, cell-block type construction with four and five stories not being compatible. The other thing I would like to address is traffic. Apparently, they are going to close the McCarran entrance and exit, and it will use Lakeside and Plumas. There's so much traffic, and exiting on Lakeside, making a left-hand turn out of there will be absolutely impossible. It's just such a short term. It can't happen. It makes no sense at all. The third thing I'd like to address, apparently with 273 units, and I believe it's 400 and, I forget how many, 69 maybe, in parking places, apparently that total meets code. But I asked the question, since I think 121 of the units are two-bedroom and one-bedroom and some three-bedrooms, I asked the question, how many of those spaces are dedicated to residents? How many guests parking? And how many per service vehicles? Just because it meets code doesn't mean that it makes any sense at all. I don't think the project is up to the standards of the neighborhood. Again, I own the home at, on Lakewood Terrace West, across the street, so I see the traffic. I dislike that empty lot for these past, what, five years? Anyway, I hope that you take a really, really hard look at this project. Again, not opposed to developing, development, but needs to be done right, because these developers from Indiana, they're going to go away, and we have to live with it. Anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
That's it for voicemails. Do you want to do Zoom, or do you want to take public comment first?
Let's do Zoom.
Hello?
Yeah. Kim?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and then you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Kim Backus. I live in Lakewood Shores. I would just like to point out, there's a concern with traffic for every day, but today I was on McCarran at 11 o'clock, and the traffic was backed up to Greensboro because there was an accident at Plumas. There were cars heading east that turned across the median to get back over to the lane going west. So adding another 500 cars to the traffic there just might add to more potential accidents and traffic jams. So my concerns are essentially the same as all of those that have been presented to you. Lakewood is a planned community, and this is not something that was planned for this community. I think you do need to take into account those of us who have purchased properties, who have built properties, who've raised families, and who are, have certain expectations for what we will be driving past and contending with over the, every day for this property. I'm interested in knowing where the land will come from for this widening of McCarran. Is it this property that will be taken? Or are you going to impinge upon the Lakewood condominiums to the north? I'm concerned about people crossing the street when they do have to park on Lakeside or Plumas. That's a pretty heavy-duty arterial to have to take your children across the street for. The schools, I'm certain, are not adequate for a number of families that I expect the builder realizes will want to move in there. And I think that there's a definite need for public services that I don't see being addressed by this developer. There's going to be a need for buses. There's going to be a need for police. There's going to be a need for a whole lot of things, and the number of, I mean, the amount of traffic that's coming is not just the people who live there, it's the services they require. It's the packages being delivered. It's the ambulances that may be showing up, whatever, deliveries. Thank you very much. I'm not opposed to development. I would prefer the two-story options of multiple buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Anyone else on Zoom? It was...
No, it doesn't look like we have anybody else on Zoom that wishes to speak.
Great. Thank you. We'll bring it back to chambers for public comment. We'll start with Teri Rupert. Thank you. Please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Teri Rupert. I am representing Lakewood Villas HOA, and it is 127 homeowners. We are directly across from this development, and we are directly impacted by this project. I do not want to be repetitive. All the things that have previously been said, you don't need to hear again. I ask all of you to please look at this project with a critical eye for safety and for all the concerns that the residents of this area, it is a planned community. It's, you know, been in Reno, that particular area is old Reno, and this new proposal, I don't feel will coexist without conflict, if that's the definition of compatibility. We are concerned in Lakewood Villas, we already are having some problems with increased crime. And when you have apartments versus condos and townhouses, we feel like the risk of crime increases. It's a little bit more transient population. If we have to hire security for our development and pass that on to our homeowners in our HOA fees, this is not reasonable for our development. Again, I'm not going to sit here and go over all the concerns that have already been brought to your attention, but we please ask that you really look at this with a critical eye. We don't feel it's, as it's presented now, is compatible with the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Topol. Thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Steve Topol, and I live on Spinnaker Drive in Lakewood Shores. I've lived there since 19, I bought a lot there in 1978 and built my home in 1983, and I've been there ever since. My family was one of the prime developers for Lakewood Community with Mr. Jaxick. We built all the multifamily homes that were there on the golf course, and we built the Lakewood Tennis Club, which was a part of our Lakewood Apartments Phase III, and of which I ran from 1985 until 1991, when it was, when we had to get rid of it. So I've had a lot of experience. I'm still, still living there, and I love being there. And I just wanted to, I don't want to repeat what everybody else talked about, but Kim Backus mentioned that there was an accident today on the corner of, let's see, McCarran and Plumas, and I have pictures, because I was driving by this morning, and the traffic was just horrendous. And I have the photos here. I don't know, can I stick one down here and see what happens? Oh, yeah, there it is. Oh, nice picture. Anyway, that was basically what was going on, and the traffic was backed up from Plumas back to my, to Greensboro, where I turned in to go to Lakewood Shores. It was, it's a mess, and it happens, not a lot, but we do have accidents there, and the safety issue is really, really, really significant, especially now with all the increased traffic. And McCarran Boulevard seems to be busier and busier and busier now because of, I don't know, people are staying off the freeway. I don't know what they're doing, but they're coming down McCarran Boulevard from the, from God knows where, Hermady, and coming in and going to whatever destination they have, they have around Lakewood. And so it just, it's, it's really, really difficult and very scary. And the, one of the things I wanted to mention to you is that, as far as the consistency of this project, Lakewood is a planned community, and it has been since it was built by Mr. Jaxick, and he was the one who laid it out. I still have the exist, the information guide for Lakewood from 1978, and it shows, and everything that's there, it's still the same. Nothing's changed. The buildings are all the same. Everything is all the same, except now we're going to have a new building.
You still have 30 seconds.
Huh? Okay. Okay, except there's going to be a new building with a massive amount of apartments, and as opposed to the smaller, you know, four and eight units, four units, eight units, units that they have there. And it's just not consistent with what we've had, and it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. I've looked at the, oh, my time is up. Thank you very much. I'm opposed to this project.
Next, we have Laura Minotti.
Good evening. I live at...
Sorry, miss, could you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Laura Minotti.
Thank you.
I live at 4960 Plumas, which is the third driveway off of McCarran. If you know Plumas from McCarran, it is rather curvy, and with the traffic we have already, it's dangerous just to come out of our driveway. There are seven townhouses there that were built by Hewlett-Wells, and were there from '70, and preceded both the golf course and Lakewood condominiums. We have a hard time getting out because of the traffic right now. Every street that goes north is two lanes, not four, until you reach Plum. And even then, it goes down. Our street has a 30 mile an hour traffic allowable, but everybody coming off McCarran is going 40 and 50. I get passed just because I'm trying to turn into my driveway by traffic that wants to go faster. It's so curvy, that 30 miles should be 20 or 25, not what it is. And nobody goes what it is. The property values, I think, will plummet with all those apartments. Architecturally, I know very little. I've only lived in Reno at this address for 10 years, moved here in 2010 from South Lake. Parking right now is on the street because the Lakewood Terrace Apartments don't allow a lot of parking in their parking area. If you can't put it in the garage, you can't have it there. You can't park in front of your garage. You can't park in any other spaces overnight there for guests. The parking on the street already is unbelievable, and now you want to add all these apartments that will increase that and then increase the crossing of the street and the traffic that is already terrible? I urge you not to give these people a permit for all these apartments. We have above that piece of land a great deal of apartments. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mary Ann Merriam. And you, miss, please state your name for the record in about three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Mary Ann Merriam. I live at 8600 Lakeside Drive. I am a near neighbor of this project, and I urge you to vote no on the current configuration design. Some key concerns, I believe, must be addressed before any approval are Lakeside Drive access. This should be for emergency access use only. The entry onto Plumas, which is further from McCarran, would manage traffic better. Traffic is already problematic with the potential addition of hundreds of new vehicles. The Lakeside access must be restricted to emergencies only due to safety concerns. At the Ward 2 NAB meeting, it was discussed that the proposed site plan does not accurately reflect the... the planned widening of McCarran, which will take out significant landscaping and mature existing trees. I think an actual accurate representation is crucial for evaluation. How do you know what you're going to get unless they actually show you what you're going to get? Mass transit, there were no bus stops, bike lanes shown. I mean, this is part of increased density. You need to eliminate cars. You have to provide for people to have other ways to get to work and get around the city. There's, there was nothing on the plans. Water runoff management, we need to prioritize our water conservation in our desert environment. Need to include bioswells, detention basins. Maybe the dog park is designed to flood. I mean, that's common practice. I think one of the largest concerns I have is the architecture. I think it's horribly monolithic. The roofs are so boxy, there's no saving grace, none. There should be stepped floor horizontal setbacks to transition from the ground to the upper levels. I mean, even the things they've built over at Ranchera do that. This design is little more than a rectangular box with some windows and a two-tone color scheme. Thank you, but I think we already have enough warehouses in this city. Height compatibility, the fact that they're going to ask for a conditional use permit to raise the grade 10 feet and then build a four and five story building on this? There's nothing that's going to be compatible with that in the neighborhood. It'll be tolerated and everything except the Peppermill and the Atlantis Casinos. Thompson Thrift has a history of cookie cutter designs across numerous states. They say themselves that they have the re primary standard designs, providing construction efficiency, predictability, and an end product. Well, let's be clear, this builder does not care about our community. They care about their investment partners. Have them design something worthy of the site, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else in chambers wishing to speak under public comment for this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Basara.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Great questions. Leah, let's kick it off with you, please. You, you mentioned that staff can make the findings and by the numbers of this new project, it does seem promising from at least its currently approved plan. But what's not clear to me just yet is really by what measure or measures are these findings evaluated? Like when you, when you say that this project can coexist with the surrounding neighborhood in regards to compatibility, how is that evaluated exactly? Like what tangible measures?
Thank you, Commissioner Basara. Leah Picati for the record. Well, trying to figure out the best way to answer that. The, so when we analyze the findings, we look at, number one, what those surrounding uses are. And can this new use exist there without conflict? So, for example, and this is an extreme example, we're not, there's no quantifiable standard here. So we're not rating this on a scale of 1 to 10 and saying everything that's a seven passes. We're just looking at the types of uses that are generally permitted in a neighborhood, commercial, general, commercial, residential type of area. And do these uses coexist? I mean, we have, we have other ones that we've looked at where it was a gun range adjacent to something. And we can clearly look at that and say, yeah, these, these two things are probably not going to be okay being next to each other. But I think in this case, when I'm looking at a use that's the same as the other uses that are all around it, it's probably okay. And in terms of compatibility too, looking at the fact that there are three arterial streets surrounding this, I mean, arterials are direct connections to other parts of the city, right? So I know that there's been a lot of talk about public transportation in this area. But the reason that there's not public transportation in this area is because the demographics in this area don't require it, right? These are mostly single-family households with vehicles. And they're using those streets that are adjacent to this project to access the other areas. And I think that when we look at a project like this coming in, we're expecting those same types of demographics to come in. So in terms of compatibility, is it going to function the same as the uses that are around it? And I think the answer is yes. Is there going to be slightly more traffic? Yeah, there is. But we all know that's a chicken and egg, chicken and egg sort of scenario where you, you have the traffic and then you get more of the buildings in and you get more of those impact fees so that you can fund more of those transportation projects and so on and so forth. If, I'm sure that if the area down there on South McCarran starts requiring public transportation, then RTC would look at that. But RTC just did a study like six months ago about what the area's transportation needs are and where bus stops need to be added and what bus stops are not being used. And I looked at that plan and this area didn't come up. So again, when we're looking at compatibility, we're looking at those residential uses with vehicles. There's neighborhood commercial nearby. There's a Starbucks nearby. There's walkability. There are bike paths. So I think in terms of what we're looking at for a multifamily residential, this, this checks all the boxes.
Great, thank you. Chair, may I just quick follow up?
Yeah, please.
Great. Thanks, Leah. So just to clarify, there is no tangible scorecard by which you say, you know what, there's this.
Yeah, there's no quantifiable standard.
Okay. So, because you did mention that gun range, right? And I do recall, just for everyone's friendly reminder, that staff did recommend approval and this body initially denied it because it wasn't compatible. And that's where I'm trying to find, you know, like this overlap where we can work together for finding a better, making this a better project if possible. So is there a comparable project like this somewhere else in the city? Whether it was two years ago, three years ago, in the last six months that we can say, hey, people had concerns, but look at this project. It worked out better than we expected.
Yeah. I mean, I've worked on countless multifamily projects with the single-family uses adjacent. And in all of those cases, the applicants have worked real hard to exceed renominable code standards. And when they do, that increases the compatibility. And I haven't seen any problems from that. Another, another thing that we do look at, just for the audience and for everybody, is school capacity. Can the schools in the area handle this? Can the infrastructure in the area handle this? Do we have adequate sewer lines? Do we have adequate water lines? Do we have all of those things? And again, yes, I did talk to Washoe County School District. No problem handling the capacity of a 273 unit apartment complex coming into here. But again, I've had similar, similar projects up in the North Valleys, a couple of them. One over on Mayan, I've had, I mean, there's been several multifamilies that go in adjacent to single-family. We see it all the time, every day.
Great.
And I haven't, I haven't really heard any problems with those projects.
Okay. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Velto.
Thank you. Hi, Leah. So for the, there were questions raised about traffic and ingress and egress off of Lakeside. Could this project be developed without there being ingress and egress off of Lakeside? Like, could you just have the Plumas entrance and exit or do you need to have a second exit?
That is a great question, but I don't think it's a question for me. Let me, I can either turn it over to the applicants or potentially Mike Michelle, I think is here too.
Whoever, do you all know the answer?
Andy Durling for the record, Commissioner Velto. I can start and then I can maybe pass it along to either engineering staff at the city or staff with Headway Transportation, Traffic Engineer. So yes, we looked at it. We had extensive discussions with city engineering staff, both Public Works as well as Development Services. And the determination was made that, you know, due to the fact that, you know, this is, if we can bring my presentation up, a visual may help. But, you know, this is the panhandle, if you will, of the site. It is not essentially, you know, directly adjacent to all the parking. So the Lakeside Drive is on the, this side over here. So, you know, you have a little bit of parking on that side. Really, that would just be for convenience for folks that maybe live on that east side of the property. The traffic study anticipated about 10% of the traffic would be going that way, so 90% going to Plumas. All told, yes, we have to have two means of access. Limiting that access or doing something different there becomes problematic because it is a shared driveway with the adjacent multifamily to the south. So talk through that with city staff. And I don't want to put words in their mouth. They can come up here and say it themselves. But essentially, the determination was made that it is appropriate to remain as is.
Okay. And I guess, can I ask you more questions? Because I seem to remember talking with the Verde projects, that you have to have two entrances for every project for fire safety.
Correct.
Other reasons. Did you consider trying to put two entrances off Plumas? Would that...
Yeah, there's just not quite enough room there. So essentially, it would be, you know, further south here, you know, and then you've got two driveways close to each other. They're both existing driveways, right? So that was... Those were the existing driveways that served the old tennis club, a commercial use. Those are the driveways that served, you know, the adjacent multifamily on both sides there. So we're essentially using the existing infrastructure.
Gotcha. And I think I didn't fully understand that the driveway on Lakeside is already, that's already a driveway.
It's already in place. And I would further add, you know, your point about, you know, needing two means of access, that is an international fire code. And so international fire code requires two means of access. And they have a, I actually have a formula that it has to be double the hypotenuse of the site and all these things. So essentially, it forces you to have access points on opposite sides of the site.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further questions from the commission? Commissioner Del VR.
Yes, thank you. This is Commissioner Del VR. Just to follow up on the question from Commissioner Velto regarding that egress, is it, I mean, I'm assuming that the fire department has come by and checked it out and everything. And I don't even know how a fire truck can make that curve.
Presentation again. Yes, Andy Durling again. So if you'll note, I believe, Commissioner, you're discussing if a fire truck could get through this. Is that the correct, yeah? Yep. Yeah. So if you look at actually the, just the design of this, so we utilize a software called Autoturn. It's in our CAD software that we use that can take a fire truck and simulate it going through these. And so these, if you look at how wide these, the radius, the radii are on those, those returns there, there and there, that's to accommodate a fire truck. So yes, a fire truck can absolutely get through there.
Excellent. And I have a few more questions probably for you, so you might as well just hang tight.
All right.
Or you can pass it off if it's for somebody else. You know, I've read a lot of the emails that have come in and heard the voicemails and obviously the folks that came here today and I appreciate their, their input. One thing that kind of, the term that keeps coming up is bait and switch, right? So it was the club and then it was supposed to be condos and now it's supposed to be these apartments. But my understanding is that Thompson Thrift hasn't actually purchased this site yet? So just, Leah, I didn't know Leah was raising her hand. So just kind of curious as to what the, like what the process is for Thompson Thrift at this point.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I can, so yeah, just maybe, and I didn't, we talked about it a lot, right? But there is an existing approved project on the site for 314 condos. So when you're talking, you know, in the context of traffic generation and all these, you know, changes, it's changing from, there's an existing approval for four-story, 304, four-story buildings, 314 condos, right? So that's our sort of baseline where we're starting from now. This proposal, yes, Thompson Thrift came in. They're offering to purchase this property to develop what their kind of model is, right, within their business plan and business model. They are under contract to purchase it. It is very common that their purchase of a property would be contingent upon these approvals, right? They're not going to purchase it until they know that their plan is approved and they can move forward to construction documents. I won't say 100%, but nearly 100% of the projects we work on and are in front of you that are in this situation have that kind of contingency.
Thank you. I have questions for Leah. If somebody else has questions, they can go ahead and I'll come back to Leah.
Commissioner Del VR?
Sure. I have a question for Andy. Could you just tell me the justification for such a large over-parking requirement?
Sure. So, kind of a few different reasons, right? I mean, some of it is market-based. I realize that code, code has a requirement, right? It used to be based on bedroom size. The new code that we're operating under now is based on the square footage of the residential units. So that doesn't always maybe quite capture it fully. Essentially, you know, my understanding of the rationale behind going to a square foot base is that it puts the onus on the developer to know their market and provide parking appropriate for, for their uses. So again, Thompson Thrift, nationwide developer, they've built, you know, all over the country. They know their product inside and out and that's their model. For, you know, to maybe address some of the concerns or comments from the public, right? Of, yeah, the over-parking does allow for service vehicles, guests, you know, assigned parking under, you know, either in garages or under carports. Secondary parking for additional residents that may be living in the same unit. So all in, right, that's, that's sort of the rationale for providing more parking. That coupled with the feedback that we heard last time when we came through with the current approval is that there was a concern that there wasn't enough parking with that plan with more units and that there would be spill out onto Plumas Street of, you know, on-street parking that's already a pretty, you know, pretty well utilized on-street parking on Plumas.
May I just ask a follow-up? Has there been some, the visuals that were shown didn't show shaded structures for the parking or any sort of EV charging? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah. So this one, you do get a glimpse in the, in the kind of foreground behind the trees there would be some of those garages. And going back to the site plan, so there are a number of, doesn't always work right. So garages, you know, kind of around the perimeter and then these, these yellow hatched are those carports. So there is quite a bit of covered parking. As far as EV charging, I would need to consult the client. I believe they would probably install some of those. I think that's pretty common now in these developments that you would have a few EV charging spaces as well.
Maybe when staff comes back, we can go back to the staff questions we can ask if there's a requirement. Thank you.
Commissioner Del VR, did you want to ask your questions to staff?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. I think you mentioned in your presentation the traffic numbers that were there when the club was sort of in full swing or was that my imagination? That might have been my imagination. Okay. We'll skip that one. The Lakewood Apartments that are to the, I guess, east of where this lot is, do you know the, the height of those off the top of your head?
Let's pull up my presentation.
Yeah, I think that you can.
So are we talking about...
The Lakewood Apartments.
Does the MF21 over here?
Yes, yes, correct.
So I don't know the height offhand, but I can tell you that the height in the MF21 zoning district would be 45 feet?
Perfect. Thank you. That, that was, that was all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Velto?
Thank you. I think my question is for you, Leah, but then I'd also like to ask the applicant this question. Given that there is already a prior approval for a conditional use permit and there was a tentative map approved, whenever we're evaluating the findings, how do we evaluate this proposed application versus what has already been approved? Like, do we look at, do we assume there is nothing? Or are we supposed to consider this compared to what has already been approved when we're making our findings?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Velto. This, that, that's a great question. This is kind of what I was getting at during my presentation when I said that originally this was looked at as doing an amendment to that project. And if we had done it as an amendment, yes, we would be looking at that previous project and is it, is it, you know, making findings based off of that? However, since this is a completely separate project, I would recommend that we look at this with fresh eyes. I did have the, this area with the background because... area with the background because a lot of people were talking about what this should be developed as, and I think it's important to point out that that tentative map is actively approved. And I can't say that this is going to be built if this multifamily complex doesn't get approved, but I just do want to show that this site has been zoned and vetted for this sort of use already. And the findings were made at that time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd also like to hear the applicant's perspective on that question as well, but I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy Durling, for the record. Yeah, we, yes, we definitely share staff's sentiment on that, right? This is, this is an existing approved project, right, that's up there. This, this could still be built. So this would be, and you have a condition in there that essentially has that sort of strike point of, you know, when the first building permit is pulled for this project in front of you tonight, then that map goes away, right? But not until that point. It's still alive and could still be built. So, from our perspective, right, you're, you're looking at it, yes, as a new project and have to make the findings, but on some level, right, the findings have already been made for a more intense project, that it is compatible, it is appropriate use for this property, and that body made that approval, you know, made that approval a couple years ago.
Thank you.
Commissioner Romeyer?
Leah, can I ask you a question about parking? What are the EV requirements for multifamily? Obviously, this is going to be a high-end luxury market. I assume there'll be a few nice electric cars.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeyer, Leah Picati for the record. That's an excellent question, but as of right now, we don't require electric vehicle stations in code. However, that could change.
Would that change with our request for a condition, or would that change because ordinance is being examined?
I think our ordinance is being examined. I'm not, unfortunately, I'm not real up-to-date on what changes are happening in parking, but if you wanted to put a condition of approval in there, it's absolutely under the purview of this body to do so.
I guess I would ask the applicant if they're open to something like that?
Andy Durling, for the record. So, yes, EV charging is definitely a growing need and desire, especially for developments like this. Let me get to the actual plan. Talking with the applicant, yes, they do incorporate, you know, EV charging into some of the garages, and they would have some spaces dedicated with EV charging next to it. Right, at this point, it's market-driven, right? So putting a condition on it, I fear would be arbitrary to say that you have to have X percent or something like that. Going back a few years, or not, not in the too-distant future, a couple years ago, the planning commission was making those kind of queries at that time, especially, you know, when it came to single-family, right, that, hey, we should have 10% or, you know, or one out of four houses should be EV-ready. And it's just, you don't know who's going to want it and who's not, and it just became a, kind of an arbitrary, and it was determined at that time, like, that's not going to be a condition that we're going to put on projects. So, my, my preference would be, no, we would not have a condition to that effect, but it is market-driven. The growth of EV vehicles obviously is dictating that, and that's something that the developer would be, you know, probably responding to out of the gate and then continuing to respond to as EV adoption grows.
Can we quickly ask Mike?
Yeah, Mike.
Is there some ordinance work on this?
There is internal discussion, but so far, nothing is being carried forward. What we have found, as projects come forward, similar to what Mr. Durling said, it's market-driven. If the tenants demand it, then they're being put in. I think of, if you look at most of the new complexes that have gone in, there are EV charging spaces, but those were not mandated necessarily by the city of Reno.
Commissioner Bessar?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback off this current theme, and maybe for Leah, if I may. First off, you're a rock star. Thanks for always being so thorough. What, what specific sustainability approaches did staff maybe ask of the applicant to, to meet, and, or did they even meet them with this project, specifically around Reno's Sustainability and Action Plan? I think there's one in place that...
Yeah, there is some stuff about sustainability in the master plan. I just got to look at it real quick, but I can come back and answer your question in a couple minutes.
Sure, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Garrett Gordon, Commissioner spoke with Thompson and Thrift, and they are agreeable to adding a condition for EV charging stations to add 5% of the required parking would be EV parking stations. So I think that math would equate to about 15 and 1/2 charging stations or 16. We're definitely agreeable to adding that on.
And may I have a follow-up there, Chair?
Yeah, please, Commissioner Bessar.
I guess since Garrett Grace does, let's keep him up here. Since you do have a kind of a direct line there, Garrett, related to the EV charging, would the client be amenable to some sort of solar on those rooftops, since there was questions about them being flat, and that's probably a prime, prime space for solar or for some of the shaded structures to complement or supplement the EV charging as well?
Do you mind? I just want to, I, I'm very concerned. I, I like solar, I like electric vehicles. I'm very concerned that we might be overstepping in what we're allowed to do by placing these conditions unless they're tied to our ability to make findings. And I just want to put that out there as a concern, making these requests as a commission. Just want to put that on the record as a concern.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Veltow, and I do think highly of you, and I'll do a friendly pushback on this one because Leah did say that it's upon this body's discretion to ask those things. So, here I am, asking.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, appreciate the ask. I think solar is a little more complicated, right, than just agreeing to a number of charging stations. Where, how, infrastructure, what is it used for, is it net-metered, you know, all those things. I don't think I'm in position to answer that today, other than, I've made commitments to you before for projects, I'll do the same here. Thompson and Thrift is in the room listening. I can guarantee they'll, they'll use their best efforts to try to incorporate solar if possible.
Great, thank you, Garrett.
I should have a question for staff. And this kind of ties into Commissioner Veltow's point, which I agree with. I do get a little nervous around slippery slope type, because has there ever been a condition to put solar on any kind of residential or commercial development by this body or even city council?
That's a good question. Leah Picati for the record. I've been with the city three years, and I've never seen it.
Yeah, what I'm driving at is just precedent, right? Like, I think it's probably reasonable, and clearly, the applicant is amenable to EV charging stations, and it kind of has a nexus with, with parking, so you can sort of check that box. But if there's no precedent for it, and maybe this is a better question for, for city attorney, because I'm asking kind of a legal question, but, yeah, just concerned about over-conditioning or like overstepping kind of our, our bounds as a body with respect to what we can do.
Yeah, I don't think that would be an appropriate condition to try and design the project. I mean, you have to look at the findings that you have before you and make a decision whether to pass a conditional use permit or not, but if the condition is related to the findings, I don't think it's appropriate.
Understood. Thank you for weighing in. That's all I had. Do we have other questions
from the commission? Commissioner Del VR?
I have a question for you. A couple of people have brought up the widening of McCarran, and I know that they have, it's like 100-foot right now on there, and there's the bike lanes, and so I'm just kind of wondering how that would kind of consolidate, and it might actually not be a question for you, but how would that consolidate that what's there now once that widening goes into place?
Thank you. That's a great question. I'm going to turn it over to somebody who knows more.
Here he is.
Thank you, Andy Durling, for the record. Yes, we have looked into that, and that's, you know, some of the rationale because, for why there's such a wide, you know, landscape there. Obviously, it, you know, in the current state, it preserves a lot of those trees. In the future state, if, if an additional lane is going to be widened on the south side of there of McCarran, there is room for it. We did test it, and it doesn't have as big of impacts as you would think, because right now, you know, I talked about the existing driveways that used to serve the tennis club. They had pretty substantial acceleration and deceleration lanes, so there kind of is an extra lane there for a portion in the center. So really, you'd be kind of having some impacts to the east and the west as you get closer to Plumas and Lakeside to combat kind of the potential loss of those trees. There is a condition in there that staff put in, it was in the last plan, it's in this plan, that, you know, even going into the future, right, 10 years from now, if that gets widened, or, you know, whatever that is, the owner of this property at that time has to then reinstall trees to help mitigate that.
Great, thank you. And then one more question for you. A lot of people have brought up the design, and is there the potential that you would consider, or that Thompson Thrift would consider, a different design?
Not to be terse, but no. Short answer. You know, there, there's a wide variety of architectural styles in this area. There are already flat roofs, the new Toll Brothers that's being built are flat roofs. There's pitched roofs, there's, you know, there's a lot of architecture that dates back to the 70s, so this is a more contemporary architectural style. There's definitely a richness in the materials, you know, you saw kind of those, you know, those kind of mimicking wood siding plus rock and different things that were on there. So, no, we think it's a very attractive building, and it is, it is, you know, typical of what you're seeing for, you know, elsewhere in the city right now.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Do we have further questions from the commission? Commissioner Bessar?
Sure. I believe Leah was looking up something that she was going to respond to, and wasn't sure if you had an opportunity to find that.
Yes, I did. And so, I was looking at the master plan. So we have a section in Reno Municipal Code that's labeled sustainability, and then right before that, it says, "Coming Soon." So, we don't actually have sustainability codes in Title 18. And the reason that we don't, my understanding of the reason that we don't, is that when we did our master plan in 2021, alongside that, we wanted to do a sustainability and climate action sort of plan. And then I think that our sustainability standards were in turn going to come from that sustainability and climate action plan. To my understanding, it hasn't been completed yet. And so, while we, we say things in the master plan, like, explore sustainability when looking at new projects and things like that, we don't have a real definition of, you know, that means increased landscaping, less, less parking, more public transit, you know, all of those things you kind of look at when you're looking at sustainability. So again, I don't have, I don't have a scorecard for it.
I got you. So, I did find a, a kind of sustainability action plan of Reno with specifics and a lot of praising of Reno's efforts around sustainability, so I figured there must be something. So my last question is, currently, how would staff tie sustainability initiatives to the findings, whether it's this project or another project?
Well, that's, that's a good question. But I think that really, when we looked at those findings, we weren't, we weren't analyzing sustainability in there. So I, I don't have a direct answer as to how we can identify that. What I can say is that a lot of our codes in Title 18 are leaning toward that sustainability option. And, and I'm talking about percentages of landscaping and infill developments where there's already access to infrastructure and things like that. That, a lot of that stuff could be under that sustainability section, it's just not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bessar, if I can follow up, if you, if you look at our master plan policies, we have some policies, for example, related to transit-oriented development and promoting higher densities along transit quarters, that sort of thing. A lot of that has been codified in our code. When it comes to renewable energy, for example, if you, if you read the policies, it's to promote solar, wind, geothermal, encourage, it doesn't mandate it. So we have certain policies that have been taken from the master plan and are essentially codified through our, through our development standards, while others have, or encourage it, but they do not mandate it.
Right. So, how would we, in practice, encourage it?
Well, I think if you look, for example, in reviewing the findings, if, if they had come with, with a project that was completely contrary to what was encouraged through, through master plan policies, I think it's very rare that we would have one project that met every single policy in the master plan. So we look, is it consistent with the master plan, which in Leah's analysis, it is, but, you know, as, as a commissioner, you can, you very much can look at that.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
And I'll just follow up on that. I think for me, when I'm analyzing these projects and I'm looking at those master plan policies, when I do see something come forward with solar, you know, there's going to be another project coming up here in a few weeks where they did implement some sustainability options, and those are definitely plus marks, you know what I mean? So when we're looking at the first finding, and does it conform to the master plan, they're going to get bonus points in that area. Let's put it that way.
Great, thanks, Leah. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. I think the commission's probably ready for discussion, or do we have any questions? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Dragic?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks for everybody's questions. You answered a lot. I'll go backwards a little bit. I completely agree with Commissioner Veltow, the solar request, I do think it was us overstepping. I was honestly even a little uncomfortable with the EV charging request. Great, if they want to put that in, cool, and if that's something you want to do in your original application, do it, but I do think we're overstepping a little bit there. So, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Veltow. Going back to this project, it was hard not to consider looking at the old project. This was my very first planning commission meeting. It was a tight one, and similar folks came up and probably 20 more public comments. 4-3 vote, I would say two of the three no-votes. A lot of it was architectural, and a lot of it about traffic. So what I saw with an overlay of that last meeting and trying not to make my decision based on it, is a better project in that we solved a lot of the public comments issues with traffic. They were going to have an entrance and an egress off of McCarran, that's not here anymore. Also seeing the buildings in the previous project were on the perimeter of the parcel, and that was an issue. It was a budding against those townhomes and multifamily to the south and east, so we've got a more centralized building. I like a lot more, but I see the immense amount of parking. Do I want to see more units? Yes, so I approved this the last time, so we are lacking some units from it, but I do see an overall better project and looking forward to supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Veltow, did you have comments for discussion?
Yeah, so I, I largely agree with what Commissioner Dragic said. I think that I can make the findings for the project, and I think they've done a good job improving the project from what its current iteration was. I wanted to come back to this discussion of, I guess my concern, Commissioner Bessar, was like, I don't, if we want to get to a place where we require solar or other things like that, I think we need to change ordinances or possibly what the law says before we can do that, because I would be concerned that if we were to try to condition that and the applicant were to not agree, and then we were to vote against the project, that would probably make our decisions susceptible to challenge later on. And the opposite is true, where if we were to condition it and they didn't like it, it would also make our decision likely to be challenged later on. So I'm, that's why I was concerned about that and wanted to bring it up. But I like where your head's at, trying to figure out a way to kind of push towards more environmental concerns. I think we want to try to, maybe we would address that in the future with actual what our master plan says, hopefully, but, yeah, other than that, I can make all the findings, and I think they've done a good job making the project look good. I mean, frankly, I like the way it looks, but I, that's in the eye of the holder, I guess.
Thanks, Commissioner Veltow. Commissioner Del VR, did you have any comments for discussion?
You know, it's, this is, this is tough. I wasn't here the first round. I'm not originally from Reno, so there, you know, this is an area that I'm not as familiar with. You know, I'm just kind of listening to what the public is saying about safety and the look and feel. I mean, obviously, you know, change is hard, development's going to happen. The question is, is this the right, the right project for this space? And I'm, I'm still on the fence right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Romeyer, did you have comments for discussion?
Yeah, I was going to say that I appreciate that this is transit-oriented development and that there is density going in at this location. and that there is density going in at this location. I don't necessarily agree that over-parking isn't something that shouldn't be conditioned. That's a special circumstance, in which case mitigation would be something like EV parking chargers. And this isn't, this isn't a brand-new land use, so maybe solar isn't the appropriate ask, but something like an EV charger, which it sounds like the developer is willing to do, is something that we should take advantage of, this opportunity to get that in print. So that has to be done.
Thank you. Commissioner Becerra, did you have any comments?
Sure, echo Commissioner Romeyer's sentiments there, obviously. And totally respect Commissioner Draculich and Velto's point of view and appreciate that. And I agree, I don't necessarily want to mandate anything. Hopefully, my approach is usually like, how can we negotiate, you know, a better project and push us towards something that maybe will take a lot longer if we don't say or speak up for the community and for these initiatives that we say we want to push towards. And I just look at this with a fresh set of eyes, because I think Leah encouraged us as well, that this is a brand-new project. So let's just look at it from the very beginning. And I'm kind of on the fence there, particularly because of my line of questioning and conversation with Leah in that there isn't a tangible scorecard, if you will, for making the compatibility. It's just kind of like, we're just seeing if it works, right? And we're doing our best if we can. And I know Leah and staff are definitely doing that. I'm not saying otherwise. I'm just having a hard time making that tangible checkbox myself. But it is an improvement.
Thank you, Commissioner. I largely just want to echo Commissioner Velto, Commissioner Draculich's comments. I will say, to Commissioner Romeyer's point, I think it makes perfect sense if the applicant is motivated and willing to condition for the EV parking. It's going to be a nice addition to the project, and I don't see why we wouldn't put it in ink. So I would very much support a recommendation that conditions for that. I can make the findings. And yeah, I guess to the point of compatibility, I guess I just struggle seeing how not have, like how multifamily housing in the area would not be compatible, given that there is a lot of multifamily or condo quasi-residential housing. So I don't actually have any issues getting to the compatibility issue, even though it's not, I guess, you know, like a quantifiable scorecard. I think maybe just common sense would suggest that it tends to fit. So those are my comments. Do we have any further comments, Commissioner Velto?
I just want to point out, I was very persuaded, Commissioner Romeyer, by your tying this to the traffic, or I'm sorry, the over-parking and traffic mitigation. It was very persuasive, very well said. Agree with compatibility, just for the commissioners that might be on the fence. I'll tell you, I used to live like a baseball throwaway from where this is being developed. And if you look around there, I mean, you have like MF21 right across the street. You have the, I think it's a Wells Fargo building that's very high. So if you're talking about height compatibility, this would be right in line with what is directly across the street. On the other side, I think it's Plumas or Lakeside, I forget which street that is. So multifamily, I think, does fit there. I guess there's an argument potentially for like aesthetic compatibility. But, you know, my recollection is that even one of the apartment complexes has a similar like blue color in the area. So I'm not sure, you know, where that plays into it. But I think just in terms of what type of housing is around there. Like I lived in an apartment complex right down the street. There's other more densely, more dense apartment complexes that are closer. So that's how I can make the compatibility finding if I'm looking at just the type of housing. There are some, you know, single-family housing on the other side of Lakeside. And then if you go up, you know, Plumas and Lakeside both ways. But in this area in particular, there is a lot of multifamily.
Great. Chair, may I ask a question of staff really quickly?
Sure. Just one question?
Just one, promise. It's a multi-pronged question, but just one. I'm just teasing. Nuances, right? Hey Leah, I'll try not to make it multi-pronged, but just really direct. What is the current level of service for that area? And what is it anticipated to be? And what is the city's acceptable standard of level of service for traffic?
It's a great question for somebody other than me.
Perfect.
Let me get someone up here.
This will help me with my fence line, I promise.
Hello, Marissa Harned with Headway Transportation. So in the traffic study, the current level of service on McCarran at Plumas and Lakeside, or sorry, at Plumas, the intersection does currently operate at like an EF level. But with the project, the project adds minimal traffic. So the delay won't actually increase by much, about one to two seconds. And then the Plumas intersection, or sorry, the Lakeside intersection currently operates at D, which is within policy. And then in the future, with the McCarran widening, those level of service letters will drop to D, which is within policy, with and without the project.
Great, thank you so much.
Anyone willing to make a motion? Or do we have further discussion? I will entertain a motion.
On the matter of case number, my bad, wrong one. On the matter of case number LDC 25-00016, based upon compliance of the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And I can make all the findings, strike that with the additional condition that 10% of the required parking, 5% of the required parking be, have EV chargers. And with that additional condition, I can make all the findings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Who's second? I'm sorry, thank you.
Commissioner Romeyer did.
Thank you. Okay, Armstrong?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Del Viar?
Yes.
Draculich?
Yes.
Romeyer?
Yes.
Velto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. Before we close, item 4.5, I will read the appeal process into the record. Any final action? Not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 business days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. That will close item 4.5 and move to item 4.1, case number LDC 25-00013, APWF at American Flat. We'll get a presentation from staff.
Jeff, let's just wait till the room clears a little bit, okay?
Actually, is now a good time maybe for a five-minute break then, while folks clear out?
Sure.
Great. We'll take a five-minute break and reconvene. All right, we are going to reconvene this meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission and open item 4.1 with a presentation from staff. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioner Armstrong. Jeff Foster, Associate Planner, for the record. Tonight, I'm bringing you LDC 25-13, which is the Advanced Purified Water Facility at American Flat. This project involves a site that is around 52 acres, located on the northwest and southwest corners of Military Road and Lear Boulevard near Swan Lake. It involves four parcels, one of which is vacant, one of which is the Reno It involves four parcels, one of which is vacant, one of which is the Reno-Stead Water Reclamation Facility, and two sliver parcels that are adjacent to Military Road. The request before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow a non-single-family use in the Sky Vista Planned Unit Development, 24-hour operations, a non-residential development adjacent to residentially-zoned property, and last but not least, a disturbance to a major drainage way. Zooming in here, the surrounding land uses are primarily warehouses and single-family residences. The Sky Vista Homeowners Association parcel immediately to the south of the primary site contains Horse Creek, shown here between the site and the single-family residences to the south. Mayor's Park is north and west of Rizwharf. You can see that in the green area to the left there. The key issues are compatibility with surrounding land uses, site design, and major drainage way disturbance. The zoning district is Planned Unit Development, again, that's the Sky Vista PUD, and Public Facilities, PF. The master planned land uses are suburban mixed use, public quasi-public, and no land use. The two sliver parcels adjacent to Military Road are the NOLU parcels. In terms of some background, the Sky Vista PUD and the supporting handbook were approved in 1994 and contemplated approximately 2,300 single-family homes, convenience commercial, and open space. The proposed project is located on a parcel that is designated in the Sky Vista Land Use Plan as convenience commercial, and that's the parcel pictured here. The parcel was sold or transferred to the city in 2006. The city purchased the property due to its proximity to Rizwharf, which was contemplated to allow for a future-related use. Further background, the applicant will provide extensive background information on the project itself. Much of it is also included in the staff report, so I won't be going into that now. The requests are disturbance to a major drainage way, which typically requires a major site plan review, non-residential development adjacent to residentially-zoned property, which typically requires a site plan review, and then per the PUD handbook, all uses other than single-family require a special use permit, which is of course now a conditional use permit. And then lastly, we have the conditional use permit for uses operating between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Therefore, the entire application was elevated to a conditional use permit. Moving on to compatibility with surrounding land uses, the single-family residences are located a significant distance from the proposed APWF, again, the Advanced Purified Water Facility building, and the other components on the primary site, and Horse Creek provides a buffer for the closest residential uses to the south. Note that operations are enclosed within the buildings, and extensive care was taken during the design process to design the site with consideration for the adjacent residential uses. There will be a couple of quote-unquote "chemicals" used, liquid oxygen and hydrogen peroxide. The use of those is isolated to the west and the front sides of the building away from the residential uses to the south, and they will be stored indoors or outside near the project entrance in a double-walled steel tank, which will be designed in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations to ensure maximum safety. Therefore, the project will not be materially detrimental to the surrounding land uses or public health, safety, or welfare. Continuing with compatibility, the new process building at Rizwharf will not be generally visible from the surrounding land uses due to its location within the existing Rizwharf complex, distance to the new building and intervening screening shown in the picture here. Back at the APWF building, there are drive-up doors proposed on the south elevation facing the residences to the south. Staff recommends a condition limiting hours of truck arrivals and departures, idling, and onsite movement in condition number five. And again, because of residential adjacency, we are proposing the standard construction hours limitation in condition number six. The project applicant is proposing to adhere to noise mitigate -- to implement noise mitigation options from the project's acoustical study, and those will be implemented throughout construction and on an as-needed basis. Given all of the above, the proposed use is generally compatible with existing land uses in the area. Moving on to site design, the project proposes an approximately 42,000-square-foot primary process building and two supporting pump station buildings, underground and above-ground tanks and associated infrastructure. The site plan identifies a future second phase of the primary process building totaling approximately 22,000 square feet, and that's shown in the area here. There is no construction schedule for the expansion, however, the future footprint is included in the application to ensure that all code requirements are met and that no additional impacts are anticipated if and when the second phase is constructed. Dealing with lighting, their interior and exterior light sources are directed away from the residentially-zoned properties to the south, and all lighting complies with code with less than 0.5-foot candles of spill-over light at the residential property lines there. One more thing on lighting, the exterior lighting system will be mostly off until a maintenance need arises. Some lights will need to be on during the evening for safety and security reasons, including the main doors that face away from the residential uses to the south, as well as light poles at the main entrance. Continuing with site design, the project adheres to setbacks and height limits in the PUD handbook. Street-facing facades appear to meet the required articulation and ground floor transparency requirements in RMC, and the south elevation utilizes metal panels instead of traditional windows to simulate windows so that the internal lighting is eliminated that would otherwise be seen from the adjacent residential uses to the south. Last but not least, on site design, there's extensive landscaping proposed both inside and outside the perimeter fence to fulfill requirements to screen the fence itself and the building facades, to enhance the project entrance, and to create a community amenity along Horse Creek. The PUD handbook requires 25% minimum landscaping, and the applicant is proposing approximately 35%, including approximately 313 existing and new trees with a double row of trees along the south property line, again, buffering between the residential uses to the south. One more thing on trees, street trees are programmed every 30 feet in the adjacent right-of-way along Lear, per RMC. However, because the project is unable to plant trees immediately adjacent to the Military Road right-of-way due to the existence of sanitary sewer and stormwater pipes, to meet the intent of code and to provide a pleasing and shaded walking environment, the project proposes Class IV trees adjacent to the perimeter fence to create a canopy effect over the proposed shared-use path. Last but not least, we looked at major drainage way disturbance. The project -- sorry, there's a well-worn path and a pole crossing of Horse Creek currently from the adjacent subdivision to the site. The project proposes to install a formal pedestrian bridge as an amenity to access the pedestrian path that surrounds the project area. Approximately 280 cubic yards of fill are proposed for grading, for creation of that pedestrian path, as well as slope landscaping, the security fence, and an expanded land area for additional landscape screening and buffering, again, for those residences to the south. The grading activities are not anticipated to impact the existing riparian species in the bottom of Horse Creek, and construction sediment fencing or other suitable treatment will be implemented to protect the channel from sediment-loaded runoff in compliance with code. Here are the recommended conditional use permit findings. Staff can make all recommended findings, and here's the recommended motion. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name's Joe Coudry. I am a senior civil engineer with the City of Reno, so I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm going to be co-presenting with Lady Atiel with Truckee Meadows Water Authority. So we'll pass it off in a moment. Anyhow, just excited to present on this project that we've been working on for some time and to discuss the conditional use permit application. Just a little history on this project, so it's a regional effort. The city has been working on this project in some form or fashion since early 2000s, so there's a long history, and we're really excited about the innovations this project brings and just the fact that it's important. It's an important project for the region. So Tamwah is our project partner, so we have an interlocal agreement where cost-sharing on this project and working very closely together on the design. And I also just wanted to just let you know, so if you have any other questions for others, we've -- so Lydia is presenting with me, but we also got Dustin Waters, he's our Assistant Director in Utility Services, and we've got representatives from Tamwah. Dave Deagle, Engineering Manager, Water Consultant, AECOM, so Vijay Sundaram's here. Angela McCroy's managing the project, and Cynthia Albright's our planner for the project. And we have RTC representatives, Austin McQuaid's here, in case there's any questions on sort of the connection with Military Road or Lear Boulevard, all these folks are available. I don't think I missed anybody. So we did also go to the NAB in November to discuss the project. Councilwoman Ebert was there. There were some questions that we'll get into, but there were some questions regarding noise, hours, views, and landscaping, so some of those were discussed already, and we'll get into a little more detail on that in this presentation. So this is just to orient everybody to the project. You can see this project is in the North Valleys in Reno, and really, the project occurs in two primary sites that are called out. Just, there it is. Two primary areas. This is Swan Lake, this is right next to Rizwharf, and then this is a site north of the Reno-Stead Airport. However, for the purposes of this conditional use permit, it's really the focus on this This is just a brief overview of the facilities, and then Lydia's going to get into a lot more detail on the facility. So in a nutshell, if you look at what's called out with this call-out number one, that's the location of Rizwharf, the Reno-Stead Water Reclamation Facility owned and operated by the city. And then this call-out number two is depicting the Advanced Purified Water Facility that's proposed, and it's part of this conditional use permit application. And then the line work here is showing the piping connecting this site to what we're calling American Flat, with some other infrastructure that's proposed at that location. Want to give a little history on what we -- I call Rizwharf, so it's the Reno-Stead Water Reclamation Facility. So Rizwharf treats wastewater that serves about 25,000 residents. We produce high-quality recycled water that currently goes for irrigation of golf courses, construction water. And then the remainder of that is an environmental discharge that goes to Swan Lake. So the region has decades of experience using recycled water. I'm talking as a region, like Truckee Meadows, North Valleys, many decades, and the North Valley's just about 25 years. And as I stated a moment ago, but I'll just kind of just state that again, so we send water both to our recycled water customers and then to Swan Lake. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lydia.
Thank you. I'm Lydia Atiel with Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and work in the Operations Department at our drinking water facilities, and have ran the pilot units and the experiments that we've done for this project for many years. And so I'll give you a couple slides just really on what is advanced purified water, because maybe you're thinking like, well, what is this facility going to do? And this is going to be really the first facility in Nevada, so it's very important, I think, for us to just spend a couple minutes on what is this facility, and then we'll turn it back over to Joe so he can start talking about specifics on lighting, noise, and other questions. So this is Nevada's first category A-plus large-scale facility, and on the next slide I'll talk about what is A-plus, but really, it's just we're treating wastewater to drinking water. And there can be a lot of misconceptions or like feelings from the public where it's, you know, the "ick factor," and that's common, but through education and going through that, there's a lot of safety factors, and there's advanced treatment that's proven. This is really a safe and sustainable resource. So this facility is proposed to be a 2 million gallon-per-day facility. That is, again, what Joe said, it's joint-operated and owned by City of Reno and Tamwah, so it's a joint venture. And the great thing about advanced purified water is it's a drought-proof supply. You're always going to have that source that you can treat to the advanced treatment, advanced purified water, and have that supply. So it's very sustainable, and as a drought-stricken community, it's just another drop in the bucket, and this was actually recommended to look at after Governor Sandoval's Drought Task Forum. So the state looked at this and approved regulations. This is a $220 million project cost. We have received $39 million in grants to date. $30 million of that is a Bureau of Reclamation grant that we received earlier this year, and that's actually the max that a project can get, and we actually received the most of any project in the entire country for this type of project, so I think that says a lot to this project and how it's proposed. And this project also has -- a part of this is after this water is treated, it will be injected back into the aquifer for a period of time to have Mother Nature do additional treatment, and so we propose a phased implementation where this water isn't going to be served to the public tomorrow. It's a long time to have testing and working with the state to ensure that water quality is safe, and so this is not going to happen tomorrow, and we have plan for the future for this. So again, just what is category A-plus, this advanced purified water? Regulations were adopted in Nevada in 2016, and really, it's as simple as taking wastewater and treating it to drinking water, but there are a lot of steps that go through that. So Rizwharf, as Joe mentioned, that water is used for irrigation, and that is our starting point. So you might see purple pipes around town for the reclaimed or recycled water that's used for irrigation of ballparks. So that's our starting point. That then goes across the street to this facility we're discussing today, the Advanced Purified Water Facility, and from there, we have several advanced treatment processes. And after that, it pretty much meets drinking water standards, and from there, that's where we pipe it north up by the American Flat Farm, just north of the Stead Airport, and from there, it would be injected into the aquifer for a period of time, several years it would remain in the aquifer before being extracted and then potentially provided to the public once we meet that phased implementation approach. And the A-plus water has to meet all federal and state drinking water regulations. We have to remove PFAS, you might be hearing about in the news, those forever chemicals, pharmaceuticals, that this treatment process removes all of this, and it's very common throughout the United States. If you've been to Disneyland, you've drank the water. Orange County is kind of the granddaddy of them all, and they've been doing this for decades, and so this is not new. It's a very safe and sustainable practice and has been performed across the US and really the world for many decades. We are looking at the -- being the first facility in Nevada, and so I think that's really special to be the first mark on the map, working with our regulators, working with a lot of folks on this, and many years of testing treatment technology. And so Joe's going to talk about that number-two dot there, and so he mentioned that number-one is where Reno-Stead is, number-two is where this proposed facility is. There would be a pipeline to the American Flat Farm and also back, and so we have options for maintenance of those wells, but those well fields would be up on four and five on a county parcel for that injection and extraction. And then down the road, that water could be introduced into the Stead water system just west of the airport. And that number-two dot on the map, again, is just this is zoomed-in, really simplified version of that APWF building to show on the corner of Military and Lear, showing the walking path around the outside. On the next slide, Joe's going to talk about the landscaping, and so this is just showing, you know, the main entrance really on Lear Boulevard where the majority of the traffic will be coming in, and this facility, as our drinking water facilities go, it's not a facility where you have a ton of traffic coming in and out, you know? It's not a shipping facility, it's not a commercial building. It's -- this facility will probably have two operators on shift that are there, so you might have a couple operators, a couple students coming here and there, occasional maintenance activity, and most of that occurs during the daytime. There's minimal nighttime activity unless there's emergency maintenance that needs to be performed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe. He'll provide renderings, but we just felt it was really important for you to hear a little bit about what advanced purified water is, and if you want to learn more on onewaternevada.com, there's a lot about the technology, but I won't nerd out on that, so I'm going to pass it back over to Joe.
Thanks, Lydia. You even turned my page for me. That was so kind. So this is the same slide that was shown previously during the first presentation by city staff, and you can see that there's a lot of screening and vegetation, so I really want to point out a few key things that we really strove to incorporate into the design was the trees along Lear and along Military, and then Horse Creek, and we really looked at this not just in terms of what landscaping was required, but we really wanted to make Horse Creek an amenity, so the way we're doing that is by -- there is an existing path, you can come out of the neighborhood and come across in this direction now, and you'll be able to do that with a proposed project, but we're proposing a bridge here, a pedestrian bridge, and then once you cross the bridge, you'll be able to walk around the entire site on the other side, out onto the multi-use path that's proposed, back on another multi-use path that's proposed, and around the site, and then back into the neighborhood and get across the creek safely. So that, and on top of the trees, well, there are many trees. These are being planted for screening, and then as well, trees here, trees here. Some are being planted on the outside of the fence, and some are being planted on the inside of the fence for the APWF site. There's 1,000 shrubs and 15,000 perennial herbs and potted plants. I'm going to go I'm going to go through some renderings quickly, and then we'll wrap this up. So, this is a view, this is a rendering looking from Lear toward the APWF. This is year one of vegetation growth, then that's year 15. Here's the rendering looking from the neighborhood to the south. This would be from the two-story houses close to the facility. That'd be year one of vegetation growth. That's year 15. So, you can see substantial screening. And here's another rendering, the view from Lear, it's the same view again, it's just the nighttime. Typically, those interior lights will be off at night, so this would be a worst case if somebody was coming and going, and it was dark. Otherwise, the interior lights will be off during the night when no one's working there. That's year one, year 15. And then, same thing from Horse Creek. It's the same view that we saw previously, but at night, year one of vegetation growth, and then year 15. With that, I just want to point out a few key things on the lighting and the noise. We have complied with the lighting plan for the dark sky, or with the dark sky ordinance via our lighting plan. All the treatment processes that are proposed, and this project will be indoor, so it's inside the facility, concrete walls, it's inside, it's got a roof, so it's all enclosed. And we're going to follow all the recommendations for the acoustical study to ensure that the noise levels are within allowable levels for operations. We're limiting delivery hours. It's operated, just like Lydia was saying, this is during the day. We'll have deliveries during the day, some staff, limited amount of staff that actually need to work at the facility, and then some student visits for collaborative work occurring there, and potentially, you know, a couple tours a month. That could be students or other. I did just want to mention that the SONIPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, the mitigation measures that we have from that study will be incorporated into our construction specifications for this job in terms of lighting and noise. And then, the staff report, which talks about hours, that Jeff went over, hours of operation, no idling, and limitations on construction hours, those are all incorporated into this project as well. Briefly, the construction schedule looks, I'm going to kind of focus on, we're in the green here, moving quickly toward construction. We'd like to begin construction, breaking ground around fall '25, so that's next year. It's a 30-month construction window, then moving into an extensive testing and monitoring period, followed by recharge of the aquifer and extraction of water to be used for irrigation. And as Lydia was referring to, it's not until out into the future ways that this water will be extracted and used for potable uses after it's been, the robustness of the process has proven enough, and all permitting is in place. So, with that, I'm going to just show this last slide with some project information, contact information, and I thank you for your vote of approval, and the applicant agrees to all the conditions placed on the project.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Bring it back to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Velto.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, no disclosures.
Commissioner Del VR, no disclosures.
Commissioner Ruhmeyer, no disclosures.
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site and engaged with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak forums at this time. Is anyone wishing to speak via Zoom, or do we have voicemails?
We do not have anybody via Zoom. No voicemails were received. We did receive correspondence that was forwarded to the planning commission and has been entered into the record.
Thank you. Is anyone in chambers wishing to speak on this item under public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, sorry, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Becerra?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Just one. So, I guess, Jeff, why not? As you're coming up, do you want to say that this project is really thorough, really sets the bar high for multi-agency collaboration? It's obvious, it's seen. Really appreciate Ms. Albright for coordinating some of the coordination, leading up to this event, and engaging with me, so thank you so much, and Jeff as well. I was just curious, what contingencies might be in place to address potential delays in the RTC coordinated military road improvements, particularly since they're important for the project's traffic management plan?
You know, did Mike disappear?
He's like, "Lake Ridge done, I'm out of here."
Do I do interview?
It's all good. I mean...
David Deagle, Tamoa, for the record. We've been coordinating with RTC's military widening along that corridor. We've actually, will avoid the impacting their expansion. Along there, they're actually going to put in some storm drain, and we'll be coordinating with that. The access road, the entrance in there, we're coordinating with Austin McCoy, who's RTC representative, and that whole impact there, they are likely to get ahead of us. And along Lear, because they're doing a little widening there, the only impact is they're going to leave a little buffer for us to do some landscaping. So, we've been coordinating directly with them on a monthly basis to make sure that our two projects have synergy, and that way, when they get in there before us, at the end of the project, we'll end up putting some trees along there and meeting what you see there on the figure.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Do you have any other questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Del VR?
Yeah, Commissioner Del VR, and I'm not sure if this may be for Jeff. You know, you talked about the lighting, and I mean, the trees that are going to be there in 15-plus years are great, but in the interim, can you kind of help me understand sort of the lighting and how it might impact things, and if there might or is already a condition to somehow diffuse some of the lighting that's there, especially for the apartments that are on the other side of Horse Creek?
So, on the south side of?
Yes, yep, correct.
The project site, on the south side of Horse Creek?
Correct.
Single-family residences there?
Yes, thank you.
So, there's limited lighting proposed on the backside of the building in the first place. There happen to be two light poles that are within 100 feet of the residential property lines that staff requested be brought down in conformance with code to an allowable height per the zone, sorry, per the residential adjacency lighting standards. All lighting complies with, as Joe mentioned, the dark skies ordinance slash the Title 18 RMC lighting standards in terms of downlighting, lighting not spilling off of the property lines. They meet the foot candle requirement for the adjacent residential zoning. So, even from day one, we're not depending, or the applicant is not depending on, you know, multiple years of growth to shield the building, that the lighting should be very much non-intrusive from the get-go. And recall that the backside of the building also, not only does it have limited lighting, but instead of putting windows on the backside, they're putting those metal panels, so it looks visually interesting, like windows, but they won't be windows shining, you know, that would be a light source.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much, and again, appreciate all the, everybody's coordination on the effort. I think this question might be for Lydia. It has to do with the affluent flow that you mentioned was going potentially to Swan Lake. I'm just not sure exactly what, one of you, sorry, I don't, what that kind of means, and like, if there's any potential of contamination or anything like that?
Yeah, so right now, maybe I can bring up the, is this, is the presentation still open? Let me just go back to the site plan. This might be as good as any. This, oh. Go back one more here. Okay. Horse Creek basically goes past the site. So, the water reclamation facility currently discharges to one of two places. Either we send the recycled water, so it's treated water, it's recycled to Class A category is what it's called, goes to purple pipe customers. The rest of it goes into Horse Creek and then flows through Horse Creek all the way down to Swan Lake. So, that's currently, right, that occurs now. That's about 75% of the water goes to Swan Lake. About 25% goes to reuse customers. So, that's what's going to happen with this project, is those things will still happen, but the vision is to, basically, to take advantage of that water. It's a water recovery project. We're going to recover that water instead of sending it to the lake, build this facility and treat it through a whole separate and new process that'll take it to a drinking water quality standard, and then pipe that water north of the Sted Airport. So, I don't know if that answers the question. Those things will still be happening, but this will create a whole new classification of A-plus water.
Got it. And then, will, so, will Swan Lake be impacted by this? Will the...
Well, Swan Lake will actually be positively impacted, and that's one of the major reasons that the city is invested in this project, is because during wet years particularly, and with the flooding that we saw in 2017 particularly, there are flooding concerns. So, anything that we can do to reduce that footprint of water going to Swan Lake is a benefit, and at the same time, creating a new sustainable water resource, a drought-proof water resource, that's where the Water Authority came in. It was just a really good partnership between two agencies.
Great. Thank you. That was all I had. Thank you.
Do you have any further questions from the commission? Do we want to move to discussion? Do we have any comments for discussion or a motion?
Okay.
Commissioner Becerra?
Yeah, we're playing ping-pong here. Well, it's clear that this project enhances like water reliability and protects the environment. It's just good for the community, so I'm good with them, happy to make a motion.
Commissioner Ruhmeyer, did you have a comment?
Same. Appreciate the amount of work and level of detail here. It's a wonderful project.
So, drum roll. In the matter of case, LDC 25-00013, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Ruhmeyer, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We will now close item 4.1 and move to item 4.2, LDC 25-00014, web data center. Looks like we'll get another presentation from Jeff whenever you're ready.
Indeed. All right. So, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record, the second case I'm bringing you tonight, LDC 25-14, which is the web data center. So, this project is approximately six acres in size, located on the north side of North Virginia Street, approximately 1,100 feet east of its intersection with Sted Boulevard, near the Amazon Distribution Center shown there. The project is three vacant parcels. The request before you tonight is a conditional use permit that would allow development of a data center, as well as business operations between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. You might recognize the site, most of you who were on the planning commission earlier this year, that your body approved LDC 24-35 in March, which was a request for a conditional use permit to allow 24-hour operations, grading resulting in fills greater than 10 feet, and disturbance of a major drainage way associated with an industrial warehouse development. That request includes the three subject parcels that are before you tonight, as well as the parcel to the west that contains the major drainage way. Again, that parcel is not part of tonight's request. Zooming in, the surrounding land uses are primarily industrial to the north, east, and south, and a vacant parcel to the west, the one with the major drainage way. There are several non-conforming residential uses in the form of mobile home parks that are located. The first one is approximately 470 feet to the east, shown here. That is separated from the subject parcels by a parking lot and a business industrial flex development. There's a second mobile home park shown here that is separated from the site approximately 550 feet away, and again, separated by a parking lot, and a third mobile home park further away to the southwest, shown here. The key issues are compatibility with surrounding land uses, as well as site design. The zoning district is mixed-use suburban, and the master plan is industrial, and here are six policies that are supportive of the application. Moving on to data centers, my understanding is that this is the first data center project that is coming before this body. In January of this year, January 25th, the definition of a data center was incorporated into Title 18 through an administrative interpretation or decision, and it defined a data center as a facility that is used primarily for the storage, management, processing, and transmission of digital data, and which houses computer and/or network equipment, systems, servers, appliances, and other associated components related to digital data operations. Such facilities may also include air handlers, power generators, water cooling, and storage facilities, utility substations, and other associated utility infrastructure to support sustained operations of a data center. So, that's the definition of a data center that is now incorporated into Title 18 as of January of this year. Data centers are now a recognized permitted use in the MS zone with the approval of a conditional use permit. They are recognized as having significantly less truck traffic, loading and unloading operations, and dock doors for their purposes, as opposed to a traditional warehouse or distribution center. Because of that, they typically do not require as many dock doors, and so, the use standard that is in code limits the number of dock doors to three per building, and the required parking for a data center is the same as a warehouse or distribution center, which is one space per 3,300 square feet of building area. Moving on to the compatibility with surrounding land uses, the proposed operations are 24 hours around the clock, but they're indoor operations. This area is generally characterized by industrial zoning and uses that would allow the 24-hour indoor operations by right. Their nearest residentially-zoned property is about 1,500 feet away and separated from the site by the freeway, and that's shown there. And then, again, as I talked about earlier, there are significant buffers between the site and the two mobile home parks that are within 550 feet, shown here. So, it is anticipated that the project operations, these indoor operations, would not have any impacts on these nearby non-conforming residential uses. There is a proposed truck dock and drive-up door on the northwest corner of the building, and for the exterior operations, as well as the location of those dock doors, dock door and drive-up door, staff is recommending condition number five to limit the hours of truck arrivals and departures, idling, and onsite movement. And then, again, condition number six is recommended, the standard construction hours restriction, given all of the above, the proposed uses generally compatible with existing land uses in the area. Moving on to site design, the site plan includes two chiller yards and a backup generator yard with around 10 emergency generators, which are limited to being used during a power failure and during necessary periodic testing or maintenance, per condition number seven. One chiller yard faces North Virginia Street, and that's shown at the top here, and the generator yard is also visible from North Virginia Street, shown here. The chillers are about 10 feet tall with additional height for piping, and the generators are about 25 feet tall. There is a 15-foot-tall screening and security fence shown here on the two different exhibits, and that fence is proposed to screen the chillers. As you can see on the second graphic, you can't see the chillers any longer because of the screening fence, and it will also screen most of the height of the generators, as you can see on the sightline study. The proposed street tree canopy along North Virginia will further obscure the top of the generators, and condition number eight is included to have the southernmost generator facing North Virginia Street painted a custom color to coordinate with the building. In some total, the mechanical equipment that is visible from North Virginia Street will be screened by the screening fence and the vegetation that is planted there. And I'll get into more of that here in a minute. The MS zone requires a minimum of 20% landscaping, and approximately 20% is proposed. The site plan does include a 20-foot buffer, landscape buffer between the proposed sidewalk and the screening fence, and that's that double row of trees on the bottom of the picture. That is a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees that are proposed in that buffer area in a staggered arrangement at two elevations to help obscure the screening fence itself, the top of the generators, and the building, and that is per condition number nine. Here are the recommended conditional use permit findings, and staff can make all recommended findings, and here is the recommended motion. I'm available for questions.
Great. Thanks so much. Jeff, do we have a presentation from the applicant? Great. Whenever you're ready. Great. Whenever you're ready. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission, as well as City of Reno staff, Veronica Barden. For the record, I'm here on behalf of Tectonics Design Group and the Web Data Center Project, LDC 25-00014. I also have with me our entire team, John Browning, Sean Tubman, project engineers, Ken and Owen Bartlett, architects, and then we also have the applicant, Dave Hardy with Ellis Partners, to answer any questions that you might have on the project. First of all, thank you for taking the time to review our application and allowing us the opportunity to share more about this exciting and groundbreaking project. This proposal marks an important milestone for the City of Reno. It is the first data center within the city's jurisdiction, and the first time that such a use is coming before the Commission. We are thrilled to bring this project forward and to demonstrate how it aligns with City of Reno's vision for growth and innovation. Through previous discussions with this Commission, we've learned a lot about the unique needs of this area, which is primarily industrial and often associated with higher traffic volumes. This project offers a thoughtful solution by creating significantly less traffic than traditional industrial uses while also, also introducing high-quality job that matches Reno's skilled workforce. Our goal is to establish a state-of-the-art, energy-efficient facility that not only addresses the growing demand for technology infrastructure, but also serves as a valuable asset to the community. So I'm excited to walk you through the details and to answer any questions later on. Jeff did a fantastic presentation going over the site details, so I'm not going to repeat some of those details, but it is an 82,080 square foot data center on those three parcels that you can see up on your screen, and our request is for the approval of a data center used that requires, requires operations between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, so 24-hour operations. So what is a data center? A data center is more than just a building. It's the infrastructure that powers the digital world that we rely on every day, whether it's cloud computing, secure data storage, or network connectivity. Data centers make it possible. The types of data centers, you have your in-house that are operated by individual businesses. You got cloud providers. These are large-scale operations like, you know, Amazon, AWS, Azure. You have your hyperscale similar data centers that require 200 megavolt ampere-plus data centers, like the switch. And then you have colocation. These are shared facilities offering secure, cost-effective solutions for small to medium businesses, which are the backbone of our local economy. Our facility provides scalable and energy-efficient IT solutions that align with Reno's values and goals. Jeff already went through the administrative decision that was adopted earlier this year, so I'm not going to go into detail. So we are proud to partner with Colovore LLC, who's a leader in energy-efficient data centers, and a pioneer in liquid-cooled technology. Their track record speaks volumes. Their Santa Clara facility in California was awarded the 2023 ASHRAE Technology Award for reducing carbon footprint, sorry, carbon emissions by 50% and saving over 6,000 tons of carbon annually. The Colovore operates as a boutique-sized facility, much smaller in scale, 30 megavolt ampere, which is modest compared to the hyperscale data centers that are 300 megavolt ampere. We did, sorry, we did get some questions during our NAB presentation on what the, what megavolt ampere means, and it's, it's the unit that is used to measure transformer electrical capacity. You might be more familiar with megawatts, which is basically the efficiency. Data centers are highly efficient, so this 30 MVA would kind of translate to 27 to 28 megawatts. Here's the site plan. I kind of color-coded this to give you an idea of what the different components of this data center is going to look like. You've got the 10-foot-high chiller yard, north, south. You've got the main building that's kind of divided into three parts, front of the house, the data halls, and the power management, and then you have your 20-foot-high generator yard, kind of in the eastern side with the two transformers north and south of that. I'm trying to see the parking count because I cannot remember, but it is compliant with the RNC. We are providing underground retention, detention basin. There's a possibility that the corner one to the western side might be above ground. This is the landscaping plan. As Jeff mentioned, we are compliant with the mixed-use suburban standards of providing 20% landscaping. It is pretty extensive landscaping for this particular area versus a different use, which could take advantage of making a zone change into industrial that would not require this many trees. Here's a close-up view of the landscaping plan. Here are the elevations. Again, you, because this, the zone is mixed-use suburban, it conforms with the five out of nine architectural standards that is code-required for this zone, along with the ground-level interest along Virginia Street that requires 40% transparency. So it complies with that and is a nicer-looking building than maybe an industrial use would produce, or an industrially-zoned parcel would produce. So one of the highlights of the project is the way it supports and enhances the infrastructure in the north valleys. The applicant, Ellis Partners, have partnered with NV Energy to fund and facilitate a new substation that will add 60 MVA of capacity, and this facility will use just half of that. So you have ample room for future developments to take advantage of the, the remaining half capacity, and all electrical feeds will be underground. There is existing fiber connectivity in the area that's going to serve the project. Coming to the air-cooled chillers and water cooling, the cooling systems are designed to meet the highest standards of efficiency and sustainability. Using a closed-loop air-cool system, the facility avoids the water-intensive processes of a, of a traditional data center. This means no water is required for heat dissipation during our normal operations. Inside, the storage racks are cooled with precision, precision water, again, in a closed-loop system to maintain reliability and efficiency. Combined, these systems use only 0.3 acre-feet of water annually, and the total operations are projected to be right around half, 0.5 acre-feet of water annually, which is a remarkable achievement that reflects our commitment to Reno's environmental priorities. Here's a quick overview of that substation that we just talked about, and the underground lines in relationship with our project site. So sustainability is at the heart of this project. By incorporating high-density liquid-cooled technology, we are reducing energy usage by up to 50% compared to traditional methods. The building is PV-ready, and we're planting 175 trees, you know, transforming this barren blight, land into a greener, more vibrating, vibrant and inviting space. Economic and community contributions, the project is more than a data center. It's an investment in Reno's future. It will create high-quality jobs in areas like network managing, network engineering, facilities management, while fostering partnerships with local businesses for IT support and maintenance, and we believe Reno's skilled workforce and academic institutions are well-equipped, equipped to support these roles, ensuring the community directly benefits. Beyond jobs, the project brings significant infrastructure improvements from six, six-foot sidewalks in coordination with RTC to enhance utilities, benefiting everyone in the area. This is a quick snippet from the trip generation letter that was prepared by Headway. As you can see, the proposed project is anticipated to generate up to 81 daily trips, 9:00 AM peak hour trips, 7:00 PM peak hour trips, very low compared to what a traditional warehouse, fulfillment center, or a distribution center might have. So this is, this is that. So as per our due diligence, a comprehensive noise study was conducted to assess the potential impacts on the surrounding area, including those resident, nearby residential properties, and I would like to share the key findings and how they reflect our commitment to maintaining or minimizing the noise impacts. The study measured existing noise levels, and the study was prepared by Wise Consulting, by the way. They measured existing noise levels along North Virginia Street and the northern boundary of the property, which is closer to the nearest residences. The findings show that the ambient noise in the area is already influenced by significant truck traffic from North, North Virginia Street and nearby industrial uses. At the northern boundary, the average noise was recorded at 40, approximately 49 decibel with a peak of 69 decibel, and along North Virginia Street, the average was higher at 54 decibel with a peak of 73 decibel, and this is similar, given the industrial nature of this entire area. The data center has been carefully designed to operate well below this ambient noise levels. Our primary noise sources, the chiller units and the backup generators, are positioned strategically to minimize impact on residential areas. The chillers located on the east-west sides of the building produce noise levels ranging from 42 to 45, which are significantly lower than ambient noise levels, and the generators generate about 47 decibels under worst-case conditions that they are going to be used during power outages or the maintenance periods. These results demonstrate that the data center will not contribute significantly to the existing noise environment, and in fact, operates well within the limits required to preserve the surrounding community's quality of life. General findings, this project exemplifies through planning and careful design that it complies with the master plan's vision and all of the Reno municipal code standards, while introducing new opportunities to the community. From sustainability and infrastructure upgrades to job creation, minimal traffic impact, we've worked hard to ensure that this data center becomes a valued part of Reno's future. We're excited to bring this project to life in partnership with the city and its residents. We're grateful for the Commission's time and thoughtful consideration of the project. The Web Data Center represents a significant step forward for Reno, blending cutting-edge technology with community-minded planning. It's a project that we believe will serve the city well for years to come. Again, we're very happy to answer any question that follows this. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Oh, do you have more to add, sir?
Hi, David Hardy with Ellis Partners. We are, I represent the applicant, and Veronica did a fantastic job. I just wanted to correct one typo that was in the report, which is just for the record, the 0.3 acre-feet of water usage, which is actually per acre, not total, so, so it would round up to about two acre-feet of water usage per year total, which is still an exceptional, exceptionally low amount of water use for an industrial use, let alone a data center. However, I just wanted to correct the, the record on that, so there's no confusion in the future.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Bring it back to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Veltow.
Commissioner Veltow, no disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, no disclosures.
Commissioner DelVR, I am familiar with the site and have read the documentation that's been sent.
Commissioner Roramire read the comment letter that came from the public and spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Becerra, very familiar with the site, and same disclosures as Commissioner Roramire.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We'll now move to public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on Zoom?
No, we do not. We did receive correspondence for this item. I think it was NAB comments that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and was entered into the record. No voicemails were received, and no public comment cards.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the chambers. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak under public comment for this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions. Commissioner DelVR?
Commissioner DelVR, I have several questions. Let me start with, gosh, where to start? I guess one of the questions I have, and I'm not sure who should be addressing this, but, you know, you talked about job creation, but if you think about the ratio of square footage for that particular facility to the ratio of employees, it's actually pretty small. And so that's, that's a concern that I have, so I'm just wondering if there's other job creation that you're discussing or talking about when it comes to that.
Yes. Thank you for the question, Commissioner DelVR. So the, this data center, you know, we think of job creation in a number of different ways. First is construction of the project. So there'll be a lot of construction jobs created, and this is not like a typical industrial box or distribution center. This, this building will be filled floor to ceiling with, with equipment that is gonna, it's, so it's like 4X the amount of, you know, labor and materials that, that would go into a traditional box. So that all creates substantially more construction, labor hours, and, and local, for local suppliers to supply goods and materials to the site. Secondly is the, when the data center is up in operation, there is the onsite staff, which will certainly not have the employment density that, you know, Nextdoor, Amazon has in their facility. However, you know, we can proudly say that the, the employment within the site will be, will be highly skilled labor, you know, network engineers, facilities managers, sales, sales professionals. So there'll be many jobs created in that, in that fashion. And then additionally, the, the equipment that serves this building, the service and maintenance of that equipment will, will create substantial, you know, a multitude of positions for local, you know, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing contractors to have service agreements and, and service the agreement, service the data center on a yearly, on a regular basis.
Great. Okay. Thank you. And then another question, I think for you, but, you know, there's the Amazon site next door, and I don't, I don't know if it's already been leveraged for usage, but have you, have you considered using other warehouses in Reno that have already been developed, and potentially developing that land for something other than a big box?
Well, we, I can tell you, we, we certainly would consider that and have considered that, and there's the, this data center and any data center, it, it's very difficult to fit it into an existing building. It really needs to be a purpose-built facility in order for it to get the energy efficiency needs for the business model to work. You know, with the, the specialty equipment and, and the, the very efficient layout and, and of, and sequencing of that equipment, it's, it is possible. You know, we actually, in Santa Clara, California, have developed a, have, have repurposed an existing warehouse building for that use, and we would do that again, but that's like a needle in a haystack to find one that really actually works with that reuse. So that's why we're, we're developing this purpose-built facility.
Thanks. I have more questions, but I'll, I'll release it for now and let other people talk.
Great. I'll be sure to come back to you. While we're on this side of the Commission, do we have any questions? Uh, while we're on this side of the commission, do we have any questions? Commissioner Rohrmeyer, do you have any questions at this time?
Many, um, but I'll start with Jeff. Jeff, can you tell us a little bit about, um, the process or what you received from NV Energy going around finding number four about the public services that are available? What is the applicant's process? What is the city looking for?
So the applicant, there's no, um, so first of all, let's all acknowledge that we're forging new ground, right? In terms of what, what is, what is required to be analyzed for a data center. As a part of the standard conditional use permit process, there's not a, uh, a requirement or something along those lines to have a full vetting with the, the, the local energy supplier, i.e. NV Energy. Um, the applicant did prepare, or sorry, did indicate in their application that they have a full commitment from NV Energy to provide, uh, energy to this data center. I asked for documentation of that. They did provide a, uh, a will-serv letter, if you will, that, um, that is a part of the, uh, application record. Beyond that, I have not seen any other documentation. The applicant can certainly speak to that, but my understanding is they have a, a full commitment to provide for the energy vis-à-vis the, uh, 60 MVA, uh, substation proposed up the road. So, um, that's, that's as far as staff looked at it.
Just out of curiosity, do you know of any other land uses that are anywhere near the kind of energy loads that are being sought here today?
Um, I don't personally. It's not an area that I've had a chance to research. Um, the applicants may be able to, to speak to kind of how their facility stacks up to a traditional, you know, casino or hospital or something that would obviously be an intense energy user, um, but I don't have that, that research as a part of the staff analysis.
I'd like to punt that question then to the applicant.
Um, so the question about, uh, other uses that have a substantial, um, energy use, um, you know, there are, there are industrial uses that, that use a substantial amount of energy, um, but, you know, data centers obviously are the, the, are of one of the, you know, larger power users of, of, um, per square foot, um, uh, for industrial uses. I can't say I know the, uh, I'm familiar with the amount of power that, you know, other, you know, casinos or other, other uses like that actually need, but, um, and, um, I don't, I'm not a expert on every single use type or how much power it needs, but, um, I think your, your point that on a, the, the power demand on a per square foot basis is substantial, but that's, that's the, that is what is required in order to, um, make the use work.
Fair enough. Commissioner Becerra?
You betcha. And I promise not to make legal squirmish with my sustainability questions. Um, I guess for Jeff, yeah, we'll just kind of set the stage here. Uh, since this is the first, uh, data center before us, and I'm sure not the last, um, were there specific master plan goals and policies that were key in supporting the recommendation for approval tonight?
Michelle, can you pull up my, uh, or someone pull up my slide, my presentation?
So, um, yeah, so recognize that at the time that the master plan was prepared, there are no policies or no language whatsoever that specifically addresses data centers.
Yeah.
Um, I would imagine in the next master plan that that will be rectified, but, um, keep in mind that the, that the use again was only formally codified, uh, January of this year, so, uh, for, for Reno. So there's not, there's not, uh, a, a, uh, an analysis framework within Title 18 or the master plan that addresses data centers as a use other than the administrative interpretation that was, uh, you know, came out in January of this year, um, which is very limited in terms of what it addresses. So having said that, um, I was able to find a, a handful of, of, uh, policies and goals that support the, uh, kind of the industrial use, uh, in that area, um, and, you know, just kind of the overall economic strategy for the city and, and things like that. Um, you know, parking and loading to the backside of the building as opposed to the front facing, you know, the street, things, you know, things of that nature. But there's not a, there's not a, a, a master plan framework that I could pull out that would specifically address data centers as a use in general or in this location in particular.
Okay. Um, I know, we're all doing our best. This is new territory and...
And I do have the language of all of these policies, should you want me to explore what they are, um, but I, I, I don't put that on the screen.
All good. I trust you. You're always really thorough. So that kind of tees me up for, um, going to go back to the infamous sustainability and action plan that I mentioned in the last, um, uh, project. And it highlights the importance of initiatives that improve residents' quality of life while enhancing the city's global reputation. And that whole plan is, um, supposedly tied to the master plan to the best of one can for tonight's discussion. So I was curious if there are specific opportunities for renewable energy integration, uh, that we can explore for this particular project, or that were probably already unbeknownst to, to myself and the rest of the body.
You certainly can explore that. I would, I would, um, let's go back 30 seconds or a minute. Um, the, what I would say is that, um, the, there probably are other master plan policies that would have been appropriate to include when you compare the technology that the applicant is proposing versus a traditional data center, as Veronica talked about a few minutes ago. So there might have been something in terms of water conservation and, and, um, those kinds of policies from the, uh, uh, sustainable portion of the master plan. I know you're talking, you're referring to a, a separate document, but, um, there, there might have been additional policies that would have, uh, reflected on what the applicant is proposing in terms of their approach. Back to your question about, uh, energy, uh, you know, sustainable energy technologies or whatever that might be adopted or incorporated into the project, I think is what I'm hearing you say?
Correct. Like, um, e, e, like, I know that, uh, the, the, the word of the night is solar, uh, for example. I know that wouldn't alone, um, supplement the, the demand should power fail, right? But it, it is a good option for non-critical loads. Uh, and I was just wondering if, if it was explored for those things, particularly in this area.
It was not explored as a part of the application or the, uh, subsequent kind of dialogue between staff and the applicant. So no, that was not something that was, uh, proposed nor requested, um, as a part of the, the staff analysis.
Okay.
So, but they're here tonight, so you can ask them.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jeff. I'm going to, uh, volley over to Commissioner Rohrmeyer, whoever would like to go next.
We'll just kind of, oh, did you have a comment to make to the last question?
Yeah, I addressed, addressed the...
Yeah, please just come up, say your name for the record and address the comment.
Hi, David Hardy, Ellis Partners. Um, so to, to address the, the question regarding onsite renewable energies or solar, um, it is something that we have studied. Um, and, you know, because of the equipment coverage on the, on the roofs and around the site, um, because of the, you know, structural and waterproofing requirements for the roof, um, solar is just simply not an economically feasible option for, for this project. But, um, you know, we, uh, following our conversations, um, earlier this week and, you know, and, and hearing your, um, goals, uh, to implement sustainable, you know, features onto the project, um, you know, we went back through the general plans, um, sustainability goals, um, and evaluated how our project, you know, fits with those. So I'd love to just tick through those briefly here. Um, you know, the, the, the first one, SD 22 indoor water use, um, you know, as was presented in the report, um, you know, the closed-loop air-cooled mechanical system uses zero water in the operation of it. Um, and so when compared to, uh, typical industrial uses, let alone data centers that typically use evaporative cooling and are very water-intensive, um, we have infinitely less water use. We will also, uh, you know, commit to using, um, low-flow fixtures for all the domestic fixtures in the building, um, and I'm happy to have that be conditioned on the project. As far as SD 23 energy efficiency, um, you know, this will be a liquid-cooled, high-density data center that is, you know, significantly more energy-efficient than, um, your typical data center. Colavor, uh, our, our tenant, um, is a pioneer in developing this liquid-cooled technology. And, um, as was also stated in the, in the slide deck, um, they've won Asheray Awards for, you know, reducing carbon emissions and, uh, compared to, uh, their, their data center peers. Um, and, um, SD 24, you know, renewable energy, like we said, we can't do onsite solar. It just does not work, uh, for the business model, also just doesn't work logistically for many reasons. But, um, we have, following our conversation, committed to upgrading the roof structure so that it can carry PV in the future. For if this changes from a data center down the road to another use, the roof structure will be upgraded and it will be able to carry PV in the future. SD 25 recycled building materials, um, you know, we will commit to onsite source separation of construction debris. Um, we have our, our contractor, DevCon, here, um, who, you know, was adept at doing that, and, um, it's something we would, we would add, um, as a condition on the project. I'd also like to point out, um, you know, this use is very low, there's, there's very minimal truck traffic. So the emissions from trucking will be substantially less for the data center than it would be for the shipping and receiving centers or many industrial uses that may take place, would, would, would take its place at the site. We're also planting 175 trees, um, uh, which is substantially more trees than would be required in an IC zoning. Um, we have double-loaded trees, um, along North Virginia Street. And then we are also, um, implementing stormwater management, um, which will greatly, stormwater management will be greatly improved as part of the project. We're, um, going to have stormwater detention systems for 130% of volume, so germane to the, the prior, uh, application with the, um, stormwater system. This will mitigate runoff, uh, to Swan Lake in this area. So, um, I, we, we hear, you know, Commissioner Rohrmeyer and, and Commissioner Becerra's, um, requests and, and want for, for onsite generation and honestly, you know, share in your, in your desire for that, um, but it's just not a feasible, um, a feasible aspect for this project. But we, we really hope that, um, the other, uh, sustainable advantage of this project and the above-code, um, agreements, um, that we are happy to make would be, um, uh, would please the, the body here and, uh, and get your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DelVR, did you want to pick up with your additional questions?
Sure. Um, so I, I think this might be for Jeff, but I'll ask the question and then we can, we can sort that out. Um, well, first off, this is the first I heard about the, the substation. So I guess one question I have is what if the substation can't be built or cannot provide the amount of energy that's needed? Um, yeah, I'm not sure what, what the process is and what the order is.
So, um, the, the substation actually has already been approved
Okay.
by the planning commission, the city council, and the regional planning commission. So it's a done deal.
That one's done.
In, in the sense of an approval process.
Got it. And what's the timing of that to be?
That would be a question that you might be able to answer more, and in terms of financials and anything else, but in terms of timing, yeah, I'm not aware of the, of the timing. So...
Okay. Cause I mean, the timing could impact their project, right?
Um, so we, um, we're actually funding the, uh, purchase of the equipment for this substation. Um, and, and, you know, as stated in the, in the presentation, um, it's a 60 MVA substation and 30, and, and we have a 30 MVA, um, uh, commitment, uh, to, to our project. So there'll be 30 MVA, um, available. That should be online, um, in year 2029. However, uh, the first, uh, phase of our data center will come online sooner than that, we, we certainly hope. Um, there is some existing power available that's going to help us get the, get the, um, get the project started and start to, uh, fill a portion of the center until the rest of the, of rest of the project comes online and then, or, uh, sorry, until the, the, the substation, the PVAN substation comes online, and then all of the power will be fed from that substation.
Got it. And so do you have, like, have a rule?
And, and let me clarify one thing, sorry. There is an existing, um, there's, there's existing substation, um, or an existing bank that, uh, we will be able to, um, power the initial, um, uh, phase off of. And then when the substation's online, we're going to be able to underground, uh, from there to power the rest of the facility.
Did you have, do you have like a rollout plan? Like you're going to try to build out 10% of the facility, 50% until you get the energy? Or is it kind of like a staged approach you're looking at, or?
Um, there's a load ramp schedule.
Okay.
Um, and then we've worked through that with NV Energy and have commitments and agreements with them for the delivery of the power.
Okay. Um, I don't know, do you guys want to?
Commissioner Dragic, Commissioner Veltow, do either of you have questions at this time? Commissioner Rohrmeyer, did you want to pick up your questions?
Yes. Uh, for the applicant, please. So, um, just out of curiosity, what was the reasoning or have you explored the idea of a clean transition tariff, things like Google are doing for their data centers to ensure 100% of the energy is renewable in Nevada?
Uh, we have not explored that.
And why?
Um, I would need to get back to you on, uh, for an answer for that. I mean, it's just not something that we have, um, has been, you know, required or needed, uh, for the, for the project.
Did you want to ask a question?
Uh, sure. I'm going to pivot.
Commissioner Becerra, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to pivot just a little bit, um, uh, towards, uh, fire safety, actually, just because it's the first one. It might be for Jeff, but you're welcome to stay. Just because it is the first one of its kind and so forth, did, uh, FIRE get a chance to chime in and just evaluate how they would, uh, be able to service, um, the, the, the new land use there?
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario, or maybe a benign?
Yeah. Fire did evaluate it, um, and I received no specific feedback
Okay.
other than the feedback that they provide for a lot of uses in terms of access roads and, and things like that. So, uh, and compliance with the international fire code. So, um, yeah, they evaluated it with no specific call-out for anything out of the ordinary.
Okay. Good deal. Okay. Thanks, Jeff.
You bet.
Yep.
Just kind of sticking with our rotation, Commissioner DelVR, did you have additional questions at this time?
Um, yeah, I think this one is, um, for, for Jeff. So if we approve this, um, condition, um, you know, again, it's set for 24/7. And again, right now, there's not going to be a lot of employees, there's not going to be a lot of traffic or, or truck, um, noise, et cetera, et cetera. But if it's, if it is approved here, then it's technically approved for manufacturing 24/7, correct?
No, no. So the, the, the 24/7 request is part and parcel with the data center use.
Okay.
So, so if a, if a, if, if another, uh, manuf, or industrial use
Yeah.
came, came along, if, 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 uh, Colavor, you know, closed up shop and, and, uh, you know, went away and another data center, and sorry, not another data center, a, another industrial use came along
Yeah.
would require its own separate entitlement.
Okay.
Another data center could come along and occupy it as the entitlement would run with the land, but a different use would have to go through another process.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Rohrmeyer, do you have additional questions?
One?
Yeah.
For the applicant. Um, I was curious what the contingency plan is. From time to time, NV Energy de-energizes lines for things like wildfire or strong winds. What's the plan to keep 30 megawatts going?
Well, there's redundancy within the grid. There's also multiple feeds coming into the building. So if, if a transformer blows at the, at the substation, well, far, far from ideal, there, the data center would be able to keep operating. There could be some impacts to that operation, certainly, but there's redundancy built into the, to the plan.
Quickly, is that the diesel generators?
No, it is not. And those would be run for, for temporary power outages. Those would not be run, you know, in continuation if there was a sustained, you know, power outage at, or, or, you know, a transformer were to blow, you know, in the system that's dedicatedly serving the, the project.
Just one more question about battery storage. Was that an option at this project site?
No, ba, battery storage also, I mean, similar solar, not an option. You know, frankly, it, well, battery storage doesn't really, it doesn't work too well without the, the solar, the onsite generation, frankly. And so therefore it wasn't studied, but battery storage would, wouldn't be able to provide, you know, the, the voltage that's necessary to power the, the equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions from the commissioner at this time? Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Chair. I guess for Jeff, please. Seems like we're volleying between not just sustainability, but maybe where we set the bar, especially for something new like this. Cause I, again, I suspect we'll have a few more before us in the next three months or four months or whatnot. And if we set the bar, I don't want to say low, but at a certain level, you know, are we setting us, ourselves up as a community, maybe to be reactionary in the future for how we sustain the energy demand? So I was kind of curious if in your conversations with NV Energy, if three more went online data centers to, you know, in the next three to four months, would they be able, be able to meet that demand? Part one and part two. What drives companies, I won't say their names, but companies out at TRIC to go all in on sustainability, whether it's onsite storage, solar and so forth, to, to make those decisions without any local ordinance and folks to not do it? Like what's the incentive? Do you know?
So, okay. The first question, recognize that I have not had any direct conversations with NV Energy. So in, for this project or just kind of the overall process or, and whatnot, we, we may need to decide as the city and, and I've had conversations with Mike and our principal planner, you know, that, that we may need to bring in other elements of a larger policy discussion with regard to data centers and the energy usage. For this particular project, we didn't do that.
Okay.
And Title 18 doesn't require, and the conditional use permit process doesn't require, for better or for worse, doesn't require that. So we didn't, it wasn't looked at in terms of, other than when the applicant indicated in their application that they had a commitment from NV Energy, I did ask for documentation to that effect. Why not? But in terms of a, 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 a specific finding that needs to be made, my perspective is that there wasn't a finding that, that addressed the requirement for energy to be documented. The overall city's concurrency process documented in the master plan requires at a building permit stage that various things, i.e. water, stormwater, schools, other infrastructure and services be provided and clearly documented prior to issuance of building permits. So in a way, we could kick the can down the road, punt it to the building permit stage to confirm that NV Energy has, you know, the ability to serve. At this point, we've taken their word for it, that they have the ability to serve the project and, you know, that's for better or for worse, kind of how the approach has been at this point. Again, Mike, it looks like you maybe wanted to speak here, but we, we, we may need to use this opportunity as a learning example to look into augmenting our process for future applications.
Right. Because I do remember during the spring, April Title 18 cleanup presentation, some of the, some questions did arise from this body about sustainability and providing that feedback to staff, you know, to do the rounds through council and everyone else. And obviously it seems like it didn't make it in to address this particular type of land use case. And so I'm just wondering if we're, I don't know. I kind of wish we would have something more solid to work off of, you know, with Title 18 and, and so forth.
The scope of the, of the code cleanup, I think it's more limited to literally cleanup as opposed to kind of adding substantial sections or, or areas to analyze. So I'm, I'm not privy to the particular request that this body made, but
Right.
my understanding is that that's generally outside of the scope of the current code cleanup effort.
But did, did data centers, were they part of Title 18 or where did they come in through? I can't remember that, as a land use.
So that's the administrative interpretation from January 25th of this year.
Right.
Where they became part of, of code. Mike?
And I'll jump in here, Mike Greeley, for the record. So prior to January of this year, we did not define a data center use
Right.
in our code. We've, we received numerous inquiries, literally almost on a daily basis, from developers on looking to locate data centers. And we, we were kind of, for a lack of better term, winging it on how we defined it. Is it a warehouse? Is it a closet commercial use? So we set some basic standards for what a data center is. We defined parking standards. We added supplemental standards, I believe it's no more than three dock doors, for example. And then we identified the zones that data centers would be permitted along with the process, which is a conditional use permit. We did not dive into details based on, you know, power uses or sustainability. We simply created a category so we could define where these go within, and that's why we have the CUP as a discretionary review, because we know most of them operate 24 hours, for example. Granted, we see data centers come in all the time, there are different sizes, different demands. As Jeff mentioned, I think it's probably a higher level of policy discussion to, to have, but this is, to coin Jeff's phrase, I think, you know, we're, we're charting unfamiliar waters at this point.
Right. And I'm all for being Star Trek, you know? I love exploring and just really going all out, just afraid that, it seems like we've had ample time since, as, as a city, not necessarily just folks in this, in this room to, from January to now, to explore those areas and to set us up for more success tonight by saying, when you, when this goes before y'all, here's a set of not just guidelines, but a poli, policy, you know? And I think that's sorely lacking tonight, but trying to do my best here, and I know you are as well, so I appreciate you, Jeff.
Do we have any further questions? Looks like we're ready to move into discussion. Commissioner Rohrmeier?
Sure. I appreciate the difficulty of being first. You know, it's, this is a new thing and 30 megawatts is, there's nothing in Reno Sparks, Washoe County comparable. That would be three or four renowned hospitals. That would be three Allegiant stadiums where they have the Super Bowl. Three. So we don't have anything to really compare this to. That's a tremendous amount of energy that NV Energy will probably have to include in a queue of 20 gigawatts in northern Nevada of data center requests. I've spoken to NV Energy and the, the answer is simple, that the PUCN says that you have to be served. You put in an application, you have to serve, but there's no timeframe, there's no detail provided to us if that can be served in the next year, in the next five years, in the next 10 years. So these projects are not clear. So making the case for finding number four for me is very challenging that the public infrastructure services are there. I also feel like there's nothing in finding five, which we typically think in terms of visual character, there is no other use. This is 5,000 homes, the equivalent of power for 5,000 homes. There's no equivalent use or character that I can match this to. So when I see a project that doesn't come forward with its own generation or some sort of consideration for how to help this process, because this is unfolding real time in our state, and I'll tell you, we're looking at the end of the supply chain, but there's a whole bunch of rural communities in Nevada who are getting huge solar arrays on public lands that they hate, and that's the beginning of the supply chain. And we're just trying to sort of match these things, but the demand for these data centers is incomparable. There's nothing that we can compare this to. And so I'm not clear on findings four and five. So I'm looking for some of my commissioners' opinions to help me make this decision.
Commissioner Veltow?
I'll tell you all from the outset, I don't think data centers, data centers are good for society, they are not good for the community they reside in. They're super energy intensive, they don't really create jobs. I don't think any of that is particularly relevant to my analysis of this. I think we're getting way far afield of what we should be looking at. Data centers are recognized use so long as there's a conditional use permit. If we're looking at what is compatible with the surrounding area, my view of compatibility is, does it generally fit what's around it? And while there's no data centers around it, there's no data centers in Reno. So we'd never be able to make a compatibility finding if we were only saying, are there other data centers? Which makes it impossible for the city to contemplate there being data centers and allowed use if that was the metric we have to use to determine whether it's compatible. So I look at what is around it? A bunch of warehouses, things that look super similar to what they're proposing. I don't think we should look at necessarily what they're doing in the building to make a determination as to whether or not it's compatible with the surrounding area. Does it fit the mold? It's a warehouse. There's a bunch of warehouses there, so I can say it's compatible. So I think that addresses finding number five under the CUP analysis. As far as finding number four, if NV Energy can't serve the project, that's on the applicant. They have come forward with a letter, which I wish we would have seen, I don't know if that's in the packet, but I'm being told that there is a will serve letter. That in my mind is sufficient to say that there are sufficient facilities and services available for them to operate. If there's not, they spend a bunch of money, they can't get service, that is not on us. It's really just a question of whether or not they have the ability to tell us, hey, we have a will serve letter, we can get energy. So that, therefore I can make finding number four. Beyond that, you know, I just don't think we should be making value statements on whether there should or should not be data centers. That's a policy decision for city council to do. If they want to put in place a moratorium, by all means, go for it. We shouldn't be looking too far into what they're proposing if they're telling us it can be served and it looks like it belongs in the area. I think that's really how I look at this. I can generally make the rest of the findings. I don't think the rest of the findings are in super contention, but I, I'm just concerned we're kind of evaluating whether or not we think this is a good idea. And I, I don't think that's really our job. So I, I just, I think that if they say it can get served, I can make finding number four and it looks like the buildings around it and generally is a warehouse, so I can make finding number five. So that's kind of my analysis of it.
Commissioner Del VR, do you have comments?
Yeah. So, you know, as part of Ward 4, I mean, we're disproportionately affected by these massive buildings. So you can say, yes, there's already warehouses there, but how many more warehouses are we going to shove in toward four or how many massive buildings? So I, so I have concerns with that and the, and the public feedback showed that as well. And, and I think the, the overall conversation we're trying to have here is, this is the first one, so we are setting precedents and there, there are still some questions out there about the guidelines and what the policy should be. And, and my concern is if we just say, well, we don't have anything to go by, so we should just go ahead and prove it, then the next one will have precedent set for that. And so, so my concern is, you know, what, what's the balance between this being the first one and setting precedence and making sure that we have, you know, thought about this and then thought it through, you know, do, do we have enough energy here? You know, we're going to have to start building more and more substations and, because this is just one and they're using half the energy of a substation and we're getting one request a day, we'll just never have the capacity unless we're thinking about it from a more sustainable standpoint. So that's, that's, that's my concern.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Draculich, did you have any comments for discussion?
No, I'm listening and thinking right now. You can keep it going.
Understood. Commissioner Becerra, do you have comments for discussion?
Yes, sir. So just some comments, thoughts. Appreciate your, your, your take as always, Commissioner Veltow and everyone else. I think Alex, you know, when you mentioned that we should go with what's before us and not overreach or, and so forth, I, I take that to heart in a good way. I appreciate that. But in this part of your case, by admission of staff as well, and our administrator, we actually don't have a policy to go off of, right? So I, I mean, that's their words, right? If, if, if I were a little startup right now, what I would say is, okay, we're going to rally up a quick all hands on deck and we're going to get around this and create a policy. We don't have to wait a year, we don't have to wait two years, let's all get together and get a policy around this. So our planning commission and other stakeholders can actually have some, some guiding principles and something hard and concrete to work off of, but since we do not have a policy, the best thing we can do is what we are doing tonight and trying to find that balance and hopefully not overreach, right? But serve in the best advisory capacity that we can to our fellow council and ourselves and staff.
Commissioner Becerra, if I may clarify something for the record, I wouldn't say that related to the policy, whether we have a policy, we do have development standards for data center uses. Those are defined in, we define what a data center is, there are limitations on what that use is, we don't have a specific policy in the master plan related to data centers, but there are other uses within the code that we don't have specific policies for. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. So it seems like there are some, some areas that might cover it, but there's still some potential critical gaps that, that need policy language around them. Thank you.
Do you have further comments for discussion? Commissioner Rohrmeier?
Would it be all right if I asked one question of Jeff?
Yeah, of course.
Jeff, do you have a copy of that will serve that you could put up on the screen?
Not with me, but it, do you guys have a copy of it? I'd be happy to run upstairs and get it real quick.
Sure. While you-
But I, I can tell you, I think it's from October 26th, so not that long ago. But yeah, it, it is in the record. I do have it in my, in my electronic files. So.
Just-
Okay.
Technology work.
Who has her magnifying glass?
Jeff, does it ensure that-
What's that?
Does it ensure-
Oh, there we go. Okay. All right.
Thank, thank you, Rowan.
I appreciate that. For me, the last sentence doesn't demonstrate enough information to meet finding number four.
Is there, I have a question for you, Commissioner Rohrmeier. Is there, like, is there something else they could get that would be more concrete than this NV Energy?
There are studies and things that can be presented that supply, that would tell us timeframes and loads that could be served.
I would, if it pleases the body, I could share those on the screen.
I want to hear from Commissioner Rohrmeier first. She knows a lot about this, I just want to know if she has any respect.
So I give an equivalent. TMA has what's called a Discovery 1 and Discovery 2 phase investigation that a preliminary project would submit for application and then get a thorough report, not unlike the noise report or not unlike the sewer study or hydro study that are included in the CUP. And so this just feels a little light for us to be deciding ground-
to be deciding groundbreaking new land uses.
But what, what happens though if, like, they get approved, they build it, and then NV Energy can't serve them? Like, why, why is that a reason? Like, why, why should we refuse to take the risk of approving them when they are the ones that suffer if we're, if NV Energy can't serve them?
That's a solid point. I, I really appreciate that point of view. I feel that there's so much interest in data centers that this is the first of many. We already know that there are two more on two subsequent planning commissions. And so there is no code asking us to look at cumulative effects, but we have to have discernible information then. I think we have to have a standard of detail about what utility demands this entails and when it's coming and some additional information, like, can it be served this year? Can it be served within a timeframe? Is this going to expire long before the CUP expire long before this project will ever get built?
Is, is there a way to condition it then to, like, require service for it to be operational? Or, I, I don't know, I don't know what the language would be. But it seems like if your concern is there might not be energy for it, can we condition it in a way that resolves that? Because they obviously can't operate if they don't have energy.
Well, staff brought a good point about the building permit. But we don't want to be, I think Planning Commission doesn't need to be reviewing case after case after case without a set standards of what to look for in the application. We need a certain, I feel, at least some commissioners, myself, need a certain level of detail beyond a will serve. Because this is not, again, it's not in character of anything else we have to compare it to.
Can I ask the applicant to weigh in on this discussion?
Of course.
I, I have planning memos that are referenced in this letter that I can show on the screen if-
I don't really know what that means.
So this, this includes, this includes detailed information about the service sizes, the in-service dates, the infrastructure that's required to implement them, and the lead times.
I guess why I struggle with that is even if you were to give me all that information, it would not assist me in determining whether or not you would have sufficient energy, which is kind of my point here, is that no matter what you tell me, I'm only going to care about whether or not NV Energy says you're going to get power. And I can't really do analysis over, like, we need this many kilowatts. There's a substation here that provides X. They're going to do Y to improve it. Like, I, I just think that's kind of my point here is, like, it seems like we're trying to, like, make them do a lot more because we don't think that there's specific language or requirements when all that is required under the law is, can we make findings under the CUP? And I don't think we should be having a process for applicants to come in and say, you can apply with a CUP, and then, like, move the goalposts once they get here by saying, well, we need to see all this other stuff. That's kind of how I view it. And I totally get your cover, but that's, that's my view on this, is I feel like we're trying to create additional hurdles that I, I don't know that we should be doing.
I respect your opinion, but we ask that of them in sanitary sewer. We ask that of them in storm drain. We ask that of them in water supplies. We ask them at every other utility. So why should we not be asking the same level of detail?
Do we get something more than that letter, though? Like genuinely, I-
Oh, yes. The appendices are full of sewer studies, hydro studies, noise studies, traffic studies, all of those things that help with the scientific-
Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
It's not grounding, tectonics, and group. We've had a pending potential sewer shortage in North Valleys for years. And then we've warned applicants as a city and a community that it's first in, first out. And if you get in after the state, you may not be guaranteed sewer. And we've still approved them. We haven't held up potential development on that historically.
Again, true, but we're talking about what could the applications look like going forward so that we can base decisions. And that's, that, I, this is a nuanced difference. But I think, again, because the difficulty of being first is setting the process in so many ways of how to do this, how to make these decisions.
Sorry, I hear what you're saying. I don't think we're going to probably persuade each other. But I respect what you're saying, and I think I understand your perspective. So would anyone else like to weigh in?
Commissioner Draculich.
Yeah, you guys are making it tough. Those are some solid points on both sides, not gonna lie. Yeah, at first, when I read this staff report, seeing staff recommending approval, I could make the findings, and obviously I want to be at the meeting before I actually make that final decision. I didn't have any true concerns, but there were some very good questions. You guys bring up some very solid points. And it is tough that we don't have data center policies to go by. Mike, a question for you. If this was December of 2023, and we didn't even have this issue of not having policies for a data center and our development standards, would staff still recommend approval with the same level and the same formula? And would we be in front and making different decisions as a board? Because we don't, you know, we're going with what we have set in place. Would it be the same result?
Generally speaking, had this project come in last year, we would have likely have classified it as a warehouse, made it gone through, it would have gone through a condition use permit process regardless for the, the 24-hour operation. So we probably would be at the same point we are now.
Okay. And, and that's probably where I land a little bit on that topic. And I would love nothing more for this conversation to carry over to staffs Monday through Friday night at five and what they need to do to help us do a better job. But I would land on, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation of approval. To your two points, they're solid, and it stinks. But I'm gonna, I'm, I'm on Commissioner Velto's side, and we're here to let them go have a chance at getting this done. And if they can't, that's their problem, and I wish them luck. I understand the consequences of that decision, and I respect the other side of it. But that's probably where I'll, I'll land as well. Good luck, you know. Hopefully, NV Energy can handle it, you know, they need to provide, and it serves the community to the point of compatibility. There's not going to be any residential or housing in that area. Yeah, I don't think retail's a fit. Warehouse is going to go there. Minimal traffic impacts, which military struggles with. Ward Four is tough. I'm, I'm four years in, listened in to Commissioner Munoz fight his tail off, and I love every word he ever said. And this is probably as good as it gets on this parcel for me. I mean, maybe there's a better use, and it's slightly better. But that's where I kind of land there.
I would really love the chance to, to speak if-
Sure.
To just address a couple of points that have been going around with regard to just generally electrical capacity in the area and other, other projects, other theoretical projects' abilities to, to secure that electrical capacity. I can't speak for other projects. I can only speak for our project. We are funding the construction of a substation. It is already under construction, okay? We have the, we have the power allocated to us, and we have commitments from NV Energy. You can put conditions of approval that we provide you with those commitments if you would like. But we have power allocated to us because we are paying in advance and funding for the construction of the substation that is providing that power and is also providing 30 additional NVA of power to serve any number of uses throughout the North Valleys.
I would like to just clarify one thing. As, as Jeff mentioned in his presentation, this project would not be issued a building permit from the city of Reno if they could not demonstrate that they had service from NV Energy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Becerra?
Sure, but do you want to go?
Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, it is a tough one. I see Commissioner Velto and Draculich's points really well. I also kind of take a step back and think, I know we don't have a full house tonight. There are some other applicants waiting patiently and so forth. But in the off chance that someone's listening in outer space and says, you know, I'm going to appeal this, and it goes to city council. City council themselves is going to say, well, you know, we don't even have anything to go off of. We don't have our own policy. So how do we evaluate even the appeal, right? So there isn't no beginning or end on this. I, I do love the initiative. I do appreciate what data centers have to offer. We wouldn't actually be here talking, broadcasting without data centers, the irony. But we do owe applicants and the wider public predictability. And I, it gives me serious pause knowing that we don't have that tonight. And so currently, I'm, I'm on Commissioner Rorhmeier's side with not making the findings. And I do think it's worth mentioning that we did have a project before us through Nevada Energy some months ago, where I believe their project hit a kind of wall. And, and from my understanding, it's, it's still kind of, it stands still. But it did relate to the North Valleys and be able to provide long-term resiliency. So that's a factor to consider. So I'm just kind of noodling on all this, throwing it out there. And if someone can, you know, share some other thoughts or insights, that'd be great. But as of now, I'm with Commissioner Rorhmeier.
Do we have further comments from the commission? Or are we effectively maybe at an impasse, time for a motion? Did you have additional comments, Commissioner Delvar?
Yeah, just, just, you know, kind of going back again to, to Commissioner Becerra's point. Like, North Valleys is in a unique situation where we, again, have a lot. And, and, and I understand, you know, Commissioner Draculich's point, like, what else could potentially go there? I do have concerns about the employment. It's, it's not going to bring a lot of employment. Granted, it's not going to bring a lot of traffic with that. And, and again, I'm, I'm just concerned about setting precedent. And especially in terms of the, the energy usage and the sustainability of, of any other projects, which I understand is not on the table tonight. But I just, I have some concerns with this.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if I can make a couple of comments.
Sure.
Immediately addressing your position, Commissioner Delvar. And I don't have a, a dog in the fight, or what, no, what is it? A horse in the race, a dog, dog in the fight, whatever. It doesn't matter to me, you know? So, but just as a kind of clarification, on that particular site, there is an existing entitlement that this body approved in March of this year for a warehouse development. So in, in theory, that could move forward next week. So just as a point of clarification. And that was before your time on the, yeah, it was before your time-
And that would employ more people at least.
So, true. The other point that I wanted to make is that the, I, I fully respect and appreciate everyone's positions here tonight. I think that I would have a problem with it as a staff recommendation were the existing, sorry, the approved substation not approved. If that, you know, if we were putting the cart before the horse, right? You know, kind of hoping that some project was going to come down the pipe to provide the energy, that would be, you know, malfeasance, I think might be the, the word, or something along those lines, that I would have not done my job. But since that project was approved, it's gone all the way through regional, and in effect, apparently is already under construction per the applicant. You know, we, we didn't put the cart before the horse. So I just, just offered that for consideration.
So to that point, and, and again, I know that this isn't, we're talking specifically about this particular applicant. But going forward, what, what kind of position is the city going to take? Are they going to require that, you know, X amount of energy is used? Or are we going to put sustainability in, in place where they can, you know, use, you know, different forms of energy in not, in, in certain areas and things like that? It's, it's a concern, you know, like, again, there's another one coming up probably next meeting. And will they have enough energy and to, you know, do, do we, do we care? I don't know. I mean, I, I think we should. So I'll let you talk, Manny.
Sure. One, one last thought there. I'm going to throw out just a suggestion. So holidays, I'm not sure if Dave, Roddick, and crew are not likely a, a time crunch with, you know, next steps. But if there's some wiggle room, because I'd hate to say like a no as much as a not right now. And our illustrious council member liaison is here, taking wonderful notes, I'm sure. And I'm just wondering if it would be prudent of us to say, you know what? Can we continue this and ask council to rally and say, hey, help us out here? Let's get some standards going, listen to our meeting tonight, some of the feedback that's been shared, some of the things that are probably desired and needed to have, and let's set something in place. And then once that's in place, hopefully in January, I know I'm wishful thinking because I like to move. But assuming that did happen, then we would be ready for every other data center project before us in 2025.
A continuance definitely crossed my mind several times. I think it would give some adequate time to prepare additional information or provide additional information, reference to those memos, for example. I'm not sure we would want to have the same level of dialogue the next go around. But I think that that is something I could support, more time for more information.
For the record, can I just clarify with, I think I'm hearing two things. Commissioner Rorhmeier is saying a continuance to allow for preparation of additional information. Commissioner Becerra, you're saying a continuance from some sort of policy direction from the council. I guess what, can we clarify what exactly we would be looking for in that continuance?
Sure. I'm a, I'm a big fan of and statements, not just or. So I don't think in this case it needs to be just hers or mine, but a kind of a combination of the two, right? Where we get the additional information that Commissioner Rorhmeier mentioned that is commonplace for other utilities to provide, and some policy direction from council and other stakeholders that need to be at the table. Does that answer your question?
So sorry, just quickly clarifying. I don't actually know how practical it is for the city council to formally contemplate this in sort of the timeframe that, that you're suggesting. I also don't, it's almost like a chicken or egg thing. Like, I, I think typically the council sets the policy framework at their behest, and then we tend to follow it. I don't know if-
You're making my point to say no.
I just, I, I genuinely don't know. We're getting in kind of murky territory. I mean, I don't know if, like, staff or, or anyone wants to weigh in on, on that piece. Or maybe Commissioner Velto, if you have thoughts.
I, I think we should just ask the applicant this. So I, a 3-3, if that were the outcome, is a technical denial, and you have the opportunity to appeal to city council. Would you prefer that we take a vote tonight? Or would you prefer to have an opportunity to give us more information and get a continuance?
I'm sorry, can you ask a question?
Yeah, so a 3-3 would be a technical denial. I don't know how many is going to vote. Possibly it's a 3-3. If that's the case, your option would be to appeal to council. The alternative is we are considering potentially doing a continuance. If we did a continuance, you'd have the opportunity to give us more information later on, and we'd come back to Planning Commission. Would you like us to take a vote tonight, or would you like to have a continuance?
The continuance sounds like it's to get direction from council.
Go up to the podium.
Yeah, he's going to ask the question I'm going to ask. I'm just concerned, I'm not concerned. I'm still a little confused on how much time we're talking about because we're asking for the council to chime in during the holidays or post-holidays. And their agenda is usually chock full, so I don't know if, this could be six months.
I don't-
I'll make my mind clearer. I, I think in a couple of weeks, there could be some additional reporting and some additional information from the utility that would clarify my questions.
From the applicant.
From the applicant.
So you're just asking direct-
Because I'm being asked, you're asking for, you're asking for clarity and more certainty on the provision of the power.
Me personally.
Or are there new standards that are going to be applied to our project?
Different commissioners have different perspectives. Commissioner Rorhmeier is seeking more information about ability to service the project with energy. Commissioner Becerra would like to get more input from council.
Is our new, is that fair that new standards would be applied to a project that was submitted that meets and exceeds code?
If you're, if you're asking me, my perspective might be different than some of the other commissioners.
I'm, I'm, well, I'm just confused if that, if-
Your, your project is reviewed, is reviewed under the standards at the time you submitted. So the, the development standards do not change.
So a change in standards would not apply to- So, a change in standards would not apply to our project, because we have an existing application that we've been diligently pursuing.
I would look illegal, but I think that would be correct.
Yes, Carl Hall, City Attorney, that's correct.
Yeah, so I guess, for my sake, I guess I'm.
What's the continuance?
For Commissioner Becerra's question, I don't think that's, to Commissioner Armstrong's point, I don't know if it's practical to actually get that information and make a better decision in two, three, four months necessarily.
Right.
Just my assumption at this point. Commissioner Rorhmer is asking for more information, that you, can you acquire more information?
I'm actually trying to show you the information on the screen right now, if that would be allowed.
Then, then.
Yeah, okay.
Then attack.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Armstrong, you can tell them to attack, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, whenever you're ready, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you.
It was habit, Chair Armstrong, it was only like three months ago.
And I just want to clarify that if there were a continuance, it would be just to further analyze this information from NV Energy, it wouldn't be that new standards would be able to be applied to the application.
I don't think anyone on the commission can give you an answer to that question.
But this, the city, Mr. Hall.
Was the question if there was a continuance?
It was just if there was, I just want, I did not hear your response about if there were a continuance to, for, to hear city council develop a set of new standards associated with data center development, if that would apply to our existing application that.
We're not going to change the standards for your discussion of your application. That is not going to happen.
Thank you.
Just as, out of my own curiosity, because I'm the one processing the next two data center projects that are in the queue, when we talk about standards, when we're referring to standards, I am interpreting that to mean, and just please clarify, the data centers, data center standards in particular, i.e. parking spaces at one per 3,300 square feet, three dock doors, things like that. What I thought you were talking about, Commissioner Becerra, is more policy level a direction from the council. In other words, the council's not going to prescribe a specific amount of parking or dock doors or something along those lines. What I thought you were saying was more policy level theoretical, bigger picture direction.
Sure, exactly, Jeff, more policy oriented, maybe in the same vein that my line of questioning fell for the Lake Ridge Plumas one, where I brought up certain sustainability questions, but they weren't really policy oriented, right? So, my hand got slapped, rightfully so, right? And, and so, in that same vein, I'm wondering, like, if there's no policy here, how can we proceed? And I know Mike mentioned there are certain standards, but there's no policy, so I'm just thinking worst-case scenario as well. If somebody appeals this, either way, council's going to review it, and they're going to say, we don't have a policy to go off of, we're just doing our best here, right? So, I'm sure we'll find a path forward. My whole goal is path forward, best-case scenario, you know, let's find, let's find something.
As a further clarification to the process, Carl, would, while the standards might not, any new standards that might come down the road would not be applicable to this application based on when it was submitted, would policy level direction or contemplation from the council be brought to bear if this was continued? Could that be considered?
I think you just have to go with the findings that you would typically make in a conditional use permit. And I don't know the policy is going to change anything in terms of their application as it stands now. So, if policy changes down the road, it's not going to affect this application.
So, this, this is a document with a lot of information on it.
Confidential.
And this is why.
Quickly, this might help with clarification. I think what Commissioner Rorhmer is looking for is like a designation of resource from, from your power provider. Is that effectively what this document is, where it's saying, like, we've agreed to build this, this substation, and you're paying for it as the developer? And so, the implication of your point was that we have an agreement to build this utility infrastructure, and as a result of your contribution to that, you're effectively guaranteed a designation for up to 30 MVA, or 30 megawatts, for the sake of arguing. And then there's an additional 30 that exists for other, for other applicants to potentially interconnect to. But is that your point? Is that you have, like, a certification or formal designation that says as a result of the collaboration on this project, that you're entitled to that power?
Yes, we are, we, there are several stages of agreements with NV Energy. We are, and there are, I mean, there are multiple agreements with them, some of which are executed, some of which are being negotiated and going to be final executed now, but we have certainty that we have the power allocated to us, and it will be delivered to us. Otherwise, we wouldn't be making this investment.
Okay, thank, does that help on your end? Or do you have anything to add, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Chair Armstrong. I think that's the kind of documentation that would be wonderfully helpful in these sorts of applications submitted.
Is it possible to get that documentation tonight, and maybe we pause this hearing, move to the next one, only so we can try to finish this hearing tonight? Is that doable?
If you have a comment, you can, you can come up. Sounds like maybe you're closer to it.
You all don't like that idea.
That's fine.
I'm just throwing it out there.
It's great. Let's solve the problem.
We're here, let's get cozy.
I want to make some final remarks from a planning perspective. I think we heard a lot, and I echo some of the thoughts and ideas and concerns that were brought up. I appreciate each and every member. That being said, we are submitting this application under the current code, and we have done our due diligence to follow the CUP process that has been formalized and set forth for something like this. As Mike Raely mentioned a little bit, a few minutes ago, had this come last year, this would be classified under warehouse use, but now we have defined a data center use and development standards, and we are whole to that. As part of this CUP process, we go through some additional documents, like a drainage report, a sewer report, a traffic report, if applicable, a sound study, if applicable, those are all parts and components of a CUP. For sewer, especially in the North Valleys, as John has mentioned in the past, oftentimes there is not enough capacity. That being said, that is a decision that gets denied at the building permit phase, projects have stalled for, for years and have fallen through. The CUP process has helped us kind of understand that the power is a big issue here, and has Mike Raely mentioned. We will need to prove this at a building permit phase, that there is power to make this project a reality. And echoing again, Alex Velto's and some of the other commissioners, if we find out that NV Energy is not able to provide what they have quote-unquote committed to us, this is not going to get built. But as of now, they have committed to it. As of now, the project has already gone through some regional agencies for the substation and hasn't, has gotten approved. That being said, the sewer capacity, water rights, and now energy, which is a new thing, I'm assuming would be in a first-come, first-served basis and would be under NV Energy's purview into what to approve, that falls as a burden on them.
Excuse me, I totally understand, I hear what you're saying. I think we just, we really want to know if we can, is it possible to see the other documents about energy in tonight?
It was the same document that was pulled up.
If we could, if you could move on to other applications.
So, my suggestion, this is the chair's choice, obviously, that would be my recommendation, is we try to hold the hearing, hopefully see it later. I'd open to your feedback. Well, you made the call, so.
Yeah.
Use your feedback.
I don't know, I have a couple of thoughts, right? The applicant is building the substation, either in full or mostly, whatever, whatever the arrangement is. And frankly, that's not really any of our business, commercial point, we're not, we're not discussing commercial aspects to this project or any project. I think if they are paying for the power that they're supposed to have, and they don't get it, they have bigger problems than us kind of pontificating on whether or not they have the energy. So, I don't, he also just had the document, I don't know specifically, like, what in the document that had confidential, like, plastered all over it, we want to zoom in on? But no, like, seriously, like, I think we've gotten to a point where this is just kind of silly, and I don't see any value in, like, continuing the hearing for 30 minutes and coming back to scan again a confidential document. I think we have enough to just make a decision based on the fact pattern that we've been provided.
I, personally, I feel the same way. But I think my impression in read is that there may not be enough votes to vote in favor, and if we could possibly, if our fellow commissioners could see something that makes them possibly change their perspective, I think that could be of benefit.
I mean, maybe specifically, I think Commissioner Rorhmer, this is sort of the point that you've drilled down on specifically. If you could give more clarification, maybe like what language you're wanting to see, or what specifically you need to see, and then, to the extent the applicant is actually comfortable, like, getting into it, like, I would be more comfortable with that, but I kind of turn it to you on that point.
Well, I think that, you know, this is a, these sorts of things are somewhat iterative. I mean, the code doesn't tell the applicant what studies to provide, that's not in the title. That's staff tells the applicants which technical documents are helpful in the application process. Like, the sewer study, that's not in code, right?
It's a requirement for a conditional use, a conditional use permit application has a submittal checklist, which, those are, those are requirements for submission of this conditional use permit application.
But that doesn't come from the title, that's staff's determination, correct? What you guys, over time and through your expertise, came up with that checklist.
Some of it is in code and some of it is based over time.
And I think the issue here for me, since, you know, this is possibly a 3-3 split, that would be unfortunate, is that that checklist hasn't really been created for data centers. And data centers are different than anything else we've encountered. And so, in some ways, it's a conversation with staff and probably applicant and industry at large for figuring out what kinds of information are available and are appropriate to make these determinations. And I think I'll leave it at that. I don't, I'm ready to make my vote, I think it's pretty obvious how I'm going to vote. Finding number four is a challenge for me.
I would ask for, as suggested by Commissioner Velto, the opportunity for us to show you the agreements that we have with NV Energy. If my, I don't have them at my fingertips, is it possible for a colleague of mine to zoom into the meeting to walk you through the process, the agreements and more information on the NV Energy process?
I'm not staff, and so, it's not really appropriate for me to ask for extra time to sit down and go over these documents. I'm saying.
You did ask for, you were asking for them?
Yes, I'd be happy to join a meeting, but I can't direct staff to have that meeting. What do you think?
At this point, I think staff takes direction from the commission, whether that's a route you want to go.
Then I think that that meeting should be held maybe post, I think you should, I think there should be consideration for a two- or three-week continuance to hash this out.
We trust, but want to verify, and here's the cool thing, you know, y'all are setting the foundation, and everyone else after this is going to be hopefully a lot smoother.
And just, I don't think, I don't think you're going to persuade anybody at this point. I think the question really is, would you like a continuance? Or would you like a vote and the opportunity to appeal if it doesn't go your way?
I have a couple remarks, and unfortunately, my first remark is not a direct answer to your question, so I apologize. So, there, I heard two conflicts, just language-wise. The ADM that was adopted this year, January 25th of early this year, formalizes the data center approval through a CUP.
So, I'm sorry, I hear what you're saying. It's like 10 o'clock, and I'm just going to tell you, I don't think you're going to persuade anybody. It is most important that you, for me personally, say whether you would like a continuance or a vote.
I can make that decision based on a question I wanted to ask Carl Hall. So, the current AQMD that went into effect January 25th, 25th of this year, says that the data center is an approved use through a CUP in the zones MS, IC, I, et cetera, I cannot remember. Then this was brought by Commissioner Rorhmer, that the CUP current process does not recognize data centers. It is not sufficient of a review process in terms of checklist, in terms of what, what documents needs to be provided for a data center. What does that mean from a legal perspective?
I think Commissioner Rorhmer's problem with the application is that she doesn't know that you're going to have the ability to meet finding number four, which public services and facilities are available to serve the project. So, she's looking for that information to make her findings. Other than that, if, you know, I think what Commissioner Velto is asking, do you want a continuance tonight to provide further information to the commission? Or would you like a vote, and then you can appeal it to city council?
Let me confirm with the client, just give us a couple of minutes, I appreciate the response.
Well, we would like to show the agreements and then go to a vote. If we are allowed to do so.
I think the reality would be that we would continue it to the next meeting, which is two weeks from today. Is that right?
Yes.
Sorry, just to confirm, it is two weeks from today.
You would continue to the next, yeah.
Is it being suggested, is, this, John Browning, technologist, is it being suggested that there's a question about the power, and if we demonstrate that, votes will change?
We can't really answer that question for you.
I, but I'm just, I know you can't directly answer it.
In fairness, we're being asked, we're being asked a very black and white question, go to vote or go to continuance, and it would be helpful to know from the dissenting commissioners if, if, you know, in order to answer that question, from the dissenting commissioners, if we were to show the documentation and give you a reasonable level of assurance, if you would then change your vote.
I'm certainly open to that. I'm certainly open to sitting down, looking at your documentation, talking with city staff in a joint meeting, and saying, is this the appropriate information to guarantee that this project is going to be served by energy, that there's sufficient capacity in greater northern Nevada, and so forth? And to make sure that we have documents, DNR, for example, that are the kind of information that going forward and subsequent, because there are other data centers that are following this one, can provide so that we have a, we have a set, set of documents to review to make a decision.
And Commissioner Del Valar, do you feel the same way?
I do.
Commissioner Becerra?
Correct. You know, my other stuff is aspirational, but that'll come in due time, yeah.
I think the other three commissioners are already a yes vote, so I won't make you say yes or no. So, we, given that, and the, we would have a continuance to, is it December 18th?
December 18th would be our next meeting.
We would like the opportunity to, maybe in a meeting prior with you, with the entire commission?
Well, you can't do that, because that would be violating open meeting law, so.
You get two of us at a time.
Okay, so we can meet with you all. Okay, so we can meet with you all two at a time or individually over the next two weeks, walk you through everything. We can even have NV Energy potentially join those meetings to give further assurances. And if, and we go through that, we'll be back December 18th. That's what we, that's, that's what we would like to do.
Just to clarify, you are welcome to meet with commissioners. The city cannot mandate that they meet with you. They would have to be agreeable to, to meet.
We're agreeable.
You send an email.
Yeah, to no more than two of us at a time, so we don't violate open meeting law.
Fair enough.
And with that, Commissioner or Chair, would you entertain a motion to continue to date certain the next meeting?
I would.
I'll move to continue this item to the next meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item is continued to date certain next meeting. Is it December 18th, 2024? Thank you.
We will, thank you for all the time and discussion. And thank you to Jeff and the whole Reno staff for their coordination and attention to detail through the process and appreciate the commission as well. I'll see you in a couple of weeks or probably before then.
Cheers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, y'all.
Before opening the next item, we are going to take a five minute break and then we will be back. Thank you. All right, I will bring the commission back to order and we will open item 4.3, LDC 25-00019, Orcress Drive Zoning Map Amendment. And it looks like we'll get a presentation from a very patient staff member. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Martoma, Associate Planner Specialist for the record. So before you is a request for recommendation to the city council for a zoning map amendment. And here, the project site, it's located on the north side of Orcress Drive. It's approximately 1.18 acres. And it's just about 240 feet east of Orcress Drive's intersection with Carson Lane. And so currently, the zone, the, the current zoning for the subject site is large lot residential one acre or LLR 1. And because the site's master plan land use designation is mixed employment, this request is really intended to bring the site's zoning into master plan performance by rezoning the property to mixed employment zoning. And so key issues related to this request were zoning compatibility of the subject site with surrounding properties as well as master plan performance. And so here is a graphic illustrating the proposed zone change. And as you can see here, there was a similar request for rezoning for the property address at 550 Orcress Drive, just on the south side of the street. And here's another graphic illustration showing the shared master plan land use designation of mixed employment for the subject site as well as surrounding properties in the area. Here's a table listing the development standards for both zoning districts. And as you can see here, the ME zoning district allows for greater building height as well as greater develop, developable area. And at present, it should be noted that at present, the applicant has indicated that there are no planned projects for the site. And so here's the recommended findings for zoning map amendment. And staff can make all of the findings. And here's the recommended motion and I'm available for any questions you have.
Great, thanks so much. Do we have a presentation from the applicant or is it just staff tonight?
It's just staff tonight. I believe the applicant was available. I, I'm not sure if they're still available or not.
We understand. You're great. We'll work, we'll work with you. Thank you.
No, not a problem.
So we'll bring it back to commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Veltow?
Commissioner Draculich, no disclosures.
Commissioner Del VR, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Romeyer, no disclosures.
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site and read the comment that came in related to this sometime this afternoon.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak forums. Is anyone wishing to speak via Zoom?
We did not receive any request to speak forums. We did receive a voicemail and correspondence that was forwarded to the planning commission. We'll play the voicemail and I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to make public comment at this time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Tabia. I live on Orcress Drive in Reno, Nevada. I'm calling regarding case number LDC 25-00019. Project name, Orcress Drive Zoning Map Amendment. I'm calling to let you know that it should not be changed to any other type except residential. We have an issue with the street that connects to Orcress, which is called Tenaya Creek. And trucks cannot turn around and they block the street for up to 10 minutes. And you have to sit there and wait because you can't maneuver yourself back. So I am not in agreement to changing the zoning for this parcel. If you have any questions, give me a call, 775-843-3355. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
That's it for public, our voicemail.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on general? Thank you. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on general, or sorry, on public comment for this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for questions. Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Chair. One for each. Just Daniel, two for, just for clarification, this is to bring it to conformity, is that correct?
Daniel Martoma, for the record, yes, it is. To bring the parcels zoning into master plan conformance.
Okay, perfect. So kind of procedural cleanup, if you will. Okay. And then with that, and given the voicemail we just listened to, are there conditions or recommendations that can be added to mitigate traffic or those kinds of concerns that we just heard and the email I received earlier, or?
Mike Raely, Plan Manager, for the record. At this point, this is a zoning map amendment, so we cannot condition zoning. However, this site, regardless of what is built in the future, will trigger a site plan review for residential adjacency, so there will be discretionary review in the future.
Très bien. I'm good. Thank you, Daniel and Mike.
Any other questions on the Commission? Commissioner Del VR?
Yeah, Commissioner Del VR. So can you explain how it's being brought into the master plan? Because right now, there's residential there pretty much all around it. So I'm just confused about that.
Daniel Martoma, for the record again. Yes, that's a great question. So essentially, that parcel plus the parcels around it were assigned the master plan land use designation of mixed employment through the Reimagine Reno master plan update. And so with that, there are some inconsistencies with some of the current zoning and master plan land use designation. And so this allows a bringing, or this request allows bringing that site's zoning into master plan.
So, and again, right now, it's, there's a lot of residential there. And as you probably heard if you stuck through the last conversation, as part of Ward four, we're looking for more services and housing and restaurants, not more necessarily warehouses and light industrial. So I'm just, you know, I have concerns about that. But I guess one question is, could, if somebody wants to build housing there, could they, no, just no. Okay. Could they get it rezoned?
Let me, I'll jump in. This was, so I'm actually looking at an era photo now. This originally, just to give you some history, was largely the parcels that were developed within unincorporated Washoe County before it was in the city of Reno. If you look along there, even though there's residential zoning, you'll see, if you look at an area, there's numerous nonconforming parcels that are operating with quasi-industrial uses now. So as part of the Reimagine Reno update, that entire area was kind of seen as a transition between heavier industrial to the south and to the west, to the residential. So that mixed employment, which is slightly less intense than our industrial, was assigned. So this, as Daniel mentioned, brings it into conformance. We don't actually even charge a fee to process these zone changes. We do it free of charge to bring those into compliance. But to do, for example, to subdivide that and do residential subdivision, it would take a master plan amendment to put it back to residential.
Okay. So it's sort of a moot point. There's really nothing we can do, except?
I mean, in theory, I mean, like I say, this, for us, is essentially bringing it into compliance. If somebody did want to assemble parcels and do residential, they could petition the city to do a master plan amendment if they so choose. And that would be up to this board and the Commission whether, or in the Council, whether they thought that was appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the Commission? Any discussion from the Commission?
Happy to make a motion.
Happy to entertain a motion.
All right, let's do it. Commissioner Becerra, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Sorry, Commissioner, can you state the matter number as part of your recommendation?
Commissioner Roar Meyer for the win here. LDC 25-00019.
Wait, wait. You said LDC 25. It's not.
Oh. It is.
What am I looking at?
Oh.
It's up there.
Let's start over. In the matter of LDC 25-00019, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. How's that?
Great. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a...
A second. Thank you. Can you state your name when you vote, please?
Should we just do a roll call vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We'll close. Sorry, I just got a poll. We'll close item 4.3 and open item 4.4, LDC 25-00015, Reno Housing Authority at Carville Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. Looks like we'll get a presentation from staff whenever you're ready, Carter. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carter Williams, Associate Planner, for the record. Before you tonight is a master plan and zoning map amendment for the Reno Housing Authority at the corner of, sorry, it's the northeast corner of Sutro and Carville Drive. The property is less than one acre. Nearby, so to the west of Sutro Street is Livestock Events Center and to the south of the Washoe County Administrative Building, for context. So from a master plan perspective, and I should clarify that this is just a master plan and zoning map amendment, so we're not looking at any project components. We're just looking at the impacts of the master plan and the zone change. This request for, the master plan is from mixed neighborhood to multifamily neighborhood. I have a number of master plan policies and goals up there, but I think the ones that I would like to point out are the transit oriented development and the increase in density that generally supports affordable housing retention. The multifamily neighborhood master plan zone change would support the change from multifamily 14 units per acre to 30 units per acre. So it's a, it's some increase in density. This would be conforming to that master plan, and there is similar density in adjacent parcels. And that's represented here. From a land use perspective, this actually section or this block that this project resides on is mostly occupied by multifamily. And what's not represented, because it would kind of blow up the scale of the, is to the, sorry, the north of the project site, there's an existing 44-unit multifamily project. And to the south of Carville Drive, there's a 208-unit multifamily project that are both conforming with their zoning designations. There is an existing bus stop that serves two routes that's directly adjacent to the site on Sutro Street. So this, there's a clustering of density that's happening around that transit service, which from a master plan perspective, it's supporting transit oriented development, or it's an example of transit oriented development, this increase. So from a use standpoint, this is obviously going to increase the density, which is consistent with the area. But it also adds to the opportunity for several commercial uses that are compatible with neighborhood corridors within the MF30 zone. In any case, if there is a commercial use that is proposed, it would require a site plan review. So there's an additional review that will analyze the compatibility of such uses against the residential in the area. The development standards, there's not, there is some intensification that would be expected. So there is, the setback on the rear would decrease by 10 feet. The maximum height would be increased by 10 feet. And then the stories will increase marginally. And then, again, we're talking about density. So the potential for units would increase by 23 units if they were to use the maximum density bonus for the property. And generally, from a development standards perspective, there are existing residential standards that respect adjacent massing to smaller buildings or lower intensity zones, as well as shadowing ordinances that would come into play for specifically the properties to the east that are the MF14, that lower density area. On the screen are the findings for master plan amendments. Through staff's review and analysis, we are able to meet all the findings, specifically that this is consistent with the neighborhood, that public services are available with it being a tier one area in the Carron Ring. It's kind of where we're looking for this kind of density increase. And then these are the findings for a zoning map amendment. Again, that MF30 is in conformance with the master plan. It continues a zoning scheme through transit oriented development contemplated by the master plan, and it's generally in conformance with NRS. And on the screen is the recommended motion. With this, this does come with a master plan amendment, so we would be looking for a resolution adoption today from you all, and a recommendation for the master plan and zoning map amendment to the City Council. And then following, it would go to the Reno Planning Commission, or sorry, Regional Planning Commission. And I am, that's my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Carter. Do you have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening. Finally. Stacy Huggins, for the record, with Wood Rogers. I do have a presentation, and I'm happy to go through it, but Carter did a great job summarizing the project. So if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I think that, you know, the real takeaway here, and I'm just going to scroll to the end here, you know, this master plan amendment and zone change allows the housing authority to take four parcels that they currently own, that are currently developed with some aging residential units on them, and redevelop those, bring in double the amount of units that exist there today, which would allow something that we desperately all know we need in this community, is additional affordable housing. And because it's the housing authority, we're comfortable and confident saying that it'll be affordable housing as it's truly defined and as the master plan and the city policies have been encouraging in the past year or two. So again, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have, but that's kind of the gist of why we're here tonight.
Great. Thanks so much. We'll bring it back to the Commission for disclosures. Commissioner Becerra?
Sure. I grew up in that neighborhood, so I'm familiar with the site, read and reviewed material.
Commissioner Roar Meyer, no disclosures.
Commissioner Del VR, I have been to the site and talked to the traffic police that hang out there and read the documentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Draculich, familiar with the area and spoke to the applicant's representative briefly.
Commissioner Velto, same disclosures. Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak forums. Is anyone wishing to speak via Zoom?
We did not receive any correspondence, no voicemails, and no one on Zoom.
Is anyone in the chambers wanting to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just throw it out, whoever wants to come up. So I guess, since you've mentioned that there are existing homes or complexes, what happens to the tenants if?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Becerra. J.D. Klippenstein, for the record, the Director of Development for the Reno Housing Authority. So there are currently six occupied units on these sites. All of those tenants, if we were to move forward, would receive relocation assistance. The housing authority is actually going through lots of redevelopment currently. So we have a third-party relocation firm that provides relocation counseling, helps them identify a new place either within RHA's portfolio or somewhere else in the community, and also provides financial assistance to cover all moving costs. And we work with the families about four, six, four to six months prior to them actually having to move, so that it's a pretty seamless transition.
Great. Thank you so much, J.D.
Can I stay up?
I think you're good. Thanks, bud.
Commissioner Del VR, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, because we didn't see sort of potentially what it might, might be like. You know, I did go visit that, that site, and it's tight, and I understand the need for the development and increasing the number of units. I just wanted to understand the parking and how that is being evaluated, because there's, there's no, no parking right now.
Yeah. So Carter Williams, Associate Planner, for the record. So I know you know this, but as it is a zone change in a master plan, we don't have a project. They don't have anything to put forward for us now. However, when they do come forward, they would have to meet the standards for the, and it would actually be the increase technically. So if they add additional units, they would have to meet that standard for increase. And it, that's analyzed at the building permit stage.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have one quick one, follow-up for Carter.
Commissioner Becerra, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. You mentioned in the slide, Carter, that there was, it would also be good for commercial use. Is that right?
So the zone change, so MF30 does allow for actually the most, probably our mixed use residential zone. Like, it allows for a lot more commercial uses than any other, any other residential zone. But they are limited. Like, it's even more limited than neighborhood commercial, which is probably our next tier for these, so retail may be an option. I think restaurant without alcohol or something. So there's a couple options for these pop-up neighborhood centers that could, that could come through, through zoning. But again, it would require a site plan review. We analyze compatibility at that time. But it is more of a direction and a mixed use direction, which is supported by the master plan in this location because of the transit services there.
Awesome. Anything with the U3 behind it is usually a good project, so I'm all for it. Yep.
Any further questions? Are you sure you moved to discussion? Do we have any discussion from the Commission?
Do you want us to have discussion, Chair?
I would entertain a motion.
J.D., looks like he wants to make a motion.
In the matter of, or Commissioner Draculich, in the matter, in case number LDC 25-00015, Reno Housing Authority at Carville Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendments, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to adopt the master plan amendment by resolution and recommend that City Council approve the master plan and zoning map amendments subject to conformance review by the Regional Planning Commission.
Commissioner Del VR, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We'll now close public hearings and move to item five, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. I was sick on Monday and was not in attendance. So do any of my other fellow Commissioners that serve on the Regional Planning Commission want to take this one?
Do our best. Commissioner Roar Meyer, I'll give you a quick update. We approved the update to the 2024 regional plan, including the new public infrastructures and the natural resources sections. So that is going to the Regional Governing Board, and they will vote on that December 12. We also heard a case for going from tier three to tier two in Woodchuck Lane, which is in Washoe County.
Great. Thank you. We will close item five and move to item six, staff announcements.
I've got a lengthy presentation. I'm kidding. No, I'll be quick. Just some quick updates. The Arrowleaf Zone Change project that you heard and the zoning code update that you heard at your last meeting will go to council next week for consideration. Also, council provided input to Angela and her team on updates to the sign code, so they're going to begin their outreach on that, or continue their outreach with updates to the sign code that will come back before you. And the Security Circle Zone Change that you also proved at your last meeting will actually go on the 8th of January, just because the applicant was going to be out of town, so requested that be pushed back. So that will go. And then, as a staff, Angela and I are working on some training sessions for the Planning Commission that will be brought forward after the first of the year.
Great. Thanks so much. We'll close item six and move to item seven, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items.
I, Krishmir Roar Meyer, would request that staff put together a presentation on what other cities and counties are doing in terms of local ordinances with data centers.
Any further, Commissioner Becerra?
Yes, similar to that one, but maybe it's an ask or a presentation. I'll let Mike decide. Kind of in the spirit of sustainability, how we can move that forward so it makes its way into the appropriate ordinance chapter, book, fill in the blank.
Great. Thanks. Any further suggestions? Seeing none, we'll close item seven, move to item eight, general public comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak under general public comment?
No. No Zoom, no request to speak forums, no correspondence received, and no voicemail.
Thank you. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak under general public comment? Seeing none, we'll close item eight, move to item nine, adjournment. We are adjourned.
Almost made it to 11.